Reminded me of that.
Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, Robert, that looks like.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins. Mr. Corbin.
Present.
Mr. Webb.
Oliver's in the car.
Mr. Shine.
Present.
Present.
Okay, tomorrow, Mike Allen will be saying a motion for the approval of the minutes of the administrative conference on Monday, September 22, 2014, and the city council meeting Friday, September 23. Right? Dale.
Yes, sir.
Is the spot director coming back, Shelley?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's special, too. She must have just stepped out back.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Awards.
We will lump them all together in one, Mr. Shine. I just want to take an opportunity to express great appreciation to Gregory Callenberg and all the folks who are involved, associated, connected with, sponsors of, patrons of, supporters of, the Louisiana Film Prize, Louisiana Music Prize. Outstanding effort here in Shreveport brought folks from all over the country to our little bird for three-plus days.
Wow.
And continues to give us a chance to be able to grow, develop, expand, and indigenous film and digital media industry here in northwest Louisiana. So, kudos, kudos, and kudos again.
You know what? That's probably the reason why I went to, uh, Mike and I went to buy some gas, and the prices had gone down. I guess they had made their money, took it down. Okay. Damn, look like we're gonna be getting out a little earlier, so you can hook the campaign up again.
Sounds good to me, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any council members with any distinguished guests or any awards you want to give out or any awards you want to receive today? We'll start with you, Rose, and we'll come down the line.
No, I don't have anybody today.
All right. Anybody else?
I'm good today. Under the district.
All right. Art? Are you receiving any awards since Oliver? Since Oliver's not here?
But you were gonna talk about the budget overview and extending an invitation to the...
That's true. I'm glad. And Sam, you was talking about you want a good half? You want no good half. Make it forget. Tomorrow, we will have the budget overview. And, Mr. Sibley, the mayor and I always say that this is a council meeting, so we're gonna invite all of the candidates, especially the mayoral candidates, 'cause Jeff told me I might need to leave the city council candidates out, so give them a hand up. But especially, uh, 'cause Sam said he didn't mind the mayoral candidates being here, 'cause he's a step ahead of them anyway. So, uh, we want to do that tomorrow, and we're gonna see if Mr. Thompson can reach him. And get him here, and I told him make sure he gets Brother Slack here.
Mr. Chairman, you anticipate us doing that up top of the agenda, near the front of the agenda, or?
Talking about tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we let you do that in the beginning? So, in case, I'm told that the weather's gonna be good tomorrow, Sam, and I'm told after they hear that, they might want to get back out on the campaign trail. That's what I used to want to do. Yeah.
We can handle that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Thompson, see if you can get in contact with them, as many of them as you can.
Are you gonna do that on the communications of the mayor?
I'm assuming so, that's what the...
Yeah, on the communications tomorrow. Yeah. Okay, then, Ms. Farnell. Please. Got your red dress on. Anybody got any? Okay, Jeff?
Dorothy, I was just gonna mention, I know we had talked about it, but I did receive a letter to appeal the fine from a property on Hickory Street, and so if there's no objection from the rest of the council, we may ask to add that to the appeals later on today.
That's fine, I'll be prepared for it.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
So, Ms. Farnell, do, uh, it looks like I, the residents are here concerning their property on Yartown, are they? Thirty-eight, was it? On Yartown?
Yes, that'll be coming up later, and I'll get with both of them, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dorothy. All right, Mr. Sibley, do you have a, wanna go over the revenue collection plan?
Oh, I can do it today or tomorrow. We've sent it out to everybody an opportunity to look at it, and we can address any specifics or any specific question. I will note the question that came in early in terms of, if you look at the breakdown by business class, it indicates a negative in manufacturing, and obviously the question becomes, how do you have a negative collection? That's an example where a refund was given to someone who did an amended report, so ended up, they actually filed the taxes with the wrong jurisdiction. We gave a refund in that situation, so if you look on there, you see a negative in terms of, I think it was manufacturing, but that's why there's a negative collection on that particular period. But overall, as I said, we can talk more details about it tomorrow if the council has any specific questions about it.
And everybody should have received that this morning, so if you have any questions, let Dale know, and then I guess, back to you, Chairman, or Ms. Scott, I guess, will have a...
She did submit it electronically, and again, if there are any questions, she'll be available to answer them on tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. No public hearing, Dale, too?
Yes, sir, we actually do.
Yeah, I see, okay. You'll be ready for tomorrow.
Yes, sir, and we're going to ask that the public hearing, in conjunction with ordinance 98, the Lake Street closing be postponed.
Okay.
I think both, we at the staff level as well as at the council level and the mayor's office would like to get a little more information, have that available for that public hearing, so we'd ask that that one be pushed. I think we're ready to proceed on the others on tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
Will you ask that that be postponed to a particular date, or do we need?
Yes, just one meeting. One meeting. There's a little bit of a timing issue on it, so we'd like to get it done as quickly as possible.
Okay. Do we have any legislation to be added?
Uh, Mr. Shine, we have a couple of items. One is a resolution to suspend certain provisions of Chapter 108 and Chapter 10 relative to dispensing, sale, and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages at Fairfield Medical Plaza, 2015 Fairfield Avenue, for the Susan G. Coleman race for the cure. Also, on your agenda, you have Resolution 199. It supports the concept of Atlanta-Jackson-Dallas High-Speed Rail System. Ms. Scott has asked if that be removed from the agenda to be replaced with 1998, which adds Shreveport to that list of cities. It would be Atlanta-Jackson-Shreveport and Dallas.
Okay, and we're gonna, all right, I guess we're gonna leave out Menon and Graham.
I think that's a mistake, Mr. Shine.
Huh?
I think that's a mistake.
Hey, may I say, we can't, you know, we gotta make sure we include Menon and Graham in there. You know, so... And, ma'am, I'm, I'm, I wanted to try to get up to hear your brother, 'cause he's an excellent speaker, and, uh... I won't say that publicly, but, you know, I tell you what. My recommendation, too. I don't, I don't know whether I have as much pool as I used to, but that little bit, 'cause I've always, I've always admired him, I thought he was a great speaker, and, uh, to me, he's always been smart, you know, going, almost going back to y'all's childhood, but he was a little toddler during his childhood. So, you know, he was always smart then.
I wouldn't even say I go then, Mr. Chairman.
Dale, you hear that, huh? Let's see, where are we? Public comments, I don't believe. B, do we have any? Oh, I'm sorry, B, we got one here. Revenue, Nathaniel Francis. Okay.
And one more?
Yeah.
Do you need to say me? Oh, okay.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, that was one of my former students back there. And that was when Lanier was real Lanier, huh, Brother Francis? Man, isn't that charter now?
Actually, it's closed now, Mr. Shine.
Wait a minute.
It failed as a charter and was operated by the RSD. And, but now it is, it is shuttered for this year. It is, it is not, it is a dark campus this year, Mr. Chairman.
Nathaniel, we gotta get out there and get Lanier open again, here. Can't let that, can't let that happen, man.
Lanier along with Newton Smith, the last school my father taught at.
Boy, but not Newton Smith.
Yes, sir.
When did that happen?
Beginning of this academic year for both of them.
Councilman Shine, the record actually never reflects that prior to Lanier becoming a charter, the stats was higher than it had ever been. I don't know what happened, but it was turned over to charter for some reason.
Well...
The stats was higher than it had ever been, so...
Well, one thing about it, I know, I mean, you didn't have nothing to do with it, 'cause if we'd had something to do with it, we'd have had it open.
Well, actually, I was teaching there when...
Really?
Yes. I was there the last, during the last administration, so I had proof that the stats were higher than it had ever been.
That rain will start again after the wind, Mr. Chairman.
But yet, the charter came, so I don't know, we just need to be cautious.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Rose, did you hear? Did you hear Sam?
And I'm concerned that Newton Smith, you know, is closed as well, so I don't know what's going on, but...
Okay. Oliver, so good to see you. Dale, we have no confirmations, right?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And consent agenda?
I've just been informed that there's someone who would like to make a public comment, and there was not a sign-up sheet out there.
Please, who is it? Come forward, sir. We are a very friendly group.
I was there when Pan...
Just state your name.
The big performance.
Address and...
Mr. Chairman, appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor, attendance, and all the councilmen and staff. My name's Tim Peters, I'm the real estate development manager for Circle K Stores. I live at 541 Slattery, Shreveport, 71104. I'm here to speak...
Man, you look so young today, I'm sorry. You look so young today.
I've been working out.
All right. Oliver, you hear that?
On the zoning case C-4414, we just wanted to state that we are in agreement with the NPC decision that the future land use designation is general commercial, which are large commercial areas serving a citywide or regional trade area, including shopping and entertainment centers that offer a range of retail and service establishments, including big-box stores, large supermarkets, department stores, movie theaters, and supporting retail and professional services. And quote, "The proposed zoning district and development meet the intent of this land use designation." Secondly, in the first sentence of the SBI 6 overlay ordinance, "The purpose of this ordinance is to promote compatibility of this primarily commercial corridor with the adjacent and nearby residential neighborhoods, and to ensure quality site design as properties continue to develop or redevelop." According to Robert Westerman, city engineer, Piermont is designated as a minor arterial roadway by the Federal Highway Administration and the Louisiana Department of Transportation. It has been a four-lane roadway since the 1950s. As such, it is not a residential street. As to the ZBA decision, BAC 60-14, which we have appealed, we believe that the ZBA applied the code incorrectly and used calculations of distances to churches and schools for purposes of hours' operations. Furthermore, they failed to seek advice from the planning staff on measuring the distances. Second, the ZBA used a hardship standard applicable to real property variances to an application for a special exception for a 24-hour operation, which is not required by City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances. The hardship standard is found in Section 106, 46F-4. This provision deals with the, quote, "narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a particular piece of property." There is no mention of hours in this section of the code. The ZBA even quoted this section during the hearing, but only quoted a portion of the section, and then used that to apply it to the applicant's petition, thereby giving the implication it covered hours' issues, when in fact it does not. They also applied non-uniform application and unequal treatment regarding an application for a special exception for 24 hours. We also believe that they applied non-uniform application and unequal treatment of an applicant regarding burden of proof and weight of empirical data that proves the denial of a 24-hour application is not substantially related to the public good. Also, that they applied non-uniform treatment and unequal treatment of the applicant based on economic class of neighboring citizens. The ZBA also ignored the numerous benefits to the health, safety, and welfare of the community resulting from the proposed development, including traffic safety, beautification, and landscaping, and significant drainage improvements. Seven, the non-uniform treatment and unequal treatment of the applicant by requiring a buffer zone between the proposed use and the adjoining R3 zoning, which is not required under the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances, specifically the SBI 6 overlay, which supersedes the base code. And finally, they disregarded an obvious creation of a hardship upon the applicant of unfair competition in favor of the closest and other nearby competitors. Thank you.
Wait, just one minute, Tim. Anybody want to ask Tammy the questions? Okay, I guess you did an excellent job, now.
Will there be an opportunity for more questions on the...
I mean, I certainly think we ought to talk about when we get to the...
Exactly, yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure that wasn't our last chance. I think there's definitely some more questions.
Is this Burks? Is that, is that you?
Mr. Burks?
Yes?
Yes, sir, he is.
Okay, well, we want to give you a chance to come up.
Okay, yes, sir.
That must be a zoning. Is that a...
Is it?
Isn't it?
That's a...
Driver, taxi.
Yeah, that's taxi, not riding on it.
Okay, yes, sir.
This is what this...
But I think somebody else would like another public.
Like the what?
Make a public comment.
Who? Who? Trey? Where's Trey? Trey, come up, please.
All right, I'm Trey Gibson, I live at 5166 Towah Lane in Bojor City. However, this is an issue that is specifically important to me, as my mother lives on Piermont Road, the issue that Mr. Peters just addressed, and I thought we'd like to respond just really quickly to that issue.
Please.
We'll leave it to, Mr. Havert's got to talk about it later. First off, not gonna get into some of the issues that Mr. Peters brought up, we'll deal with those certainly tomorrow when we address the council.
You got about three minutes, and I will come to this later on.
I will move to it really fast. I want to point out that the neighbors are not against a prettier Circle K on that road. We certainly believe in it. It's the plan that we are looking at specifically that is an issue at hand. Let me tell you what this is about, certainly on the bigger issue, it's about the City of Shreveport spending $2 million in a master plan and not paying attention to it. That's our concern, because zoning is zoning for a reason, and when you put a 24-hour Circle K or any other business next to where people sleep, that presents a major problem, and certainly we've got issues there. So, it's an issue about the NPC, the master plan, neighbors, and certainly the specific plan. I want to point out that, Mr. Peters, we attempted to compromise and tried to come up with something that worked. We met with them last week, in fact, trying to get to an 11th-hour compromise so that you would not have to hear arguments. That failed, and we believe that we should be supported. Let me, let me point out something really quickly as far as what he said. As far as measurement of distances, it doesn't take a lot of measurement to understand that there are a lot of houses within 300 feet of a 24-hour Circle K. So, the measurement, if you want to postpone things and let's go get in a car and measure, we can do that, we'll show you measurements tomorrow. As far as the hardship standards, I think the ZBA appropriately applied those. They didn't meet any whatsoever. And then, certainly, it's the burden of proof. The burden of proof is on Circle K. If they're gonna come in and change B1 zoning, then they've got the burden of proof to show why the need is there and why the benefit of the city outweighs those people who are living right next door. And so, I would ask y'all to consider those issues as we move forward, and I'll leave it to Mr. Scott to make some other claims. Thank you.
Okay.
Unless y'all have any questions.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. That particular piece of legislation will come up later on, on the agenda. All right. Mr. Sibley?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, under Section 8 consent agenda legislation, there are no items for introduction, but there are some on for adoption. Resolution Number 185 authorizes Briscoe Properties to connect Long Lake Estates, Unit Number 22, to the water and sewer system of the City of Shreveport.
Mike, any observation? I'm good with that. All right, let's move on, please.
Number 186 authorizes Ronald and Melanie Reynolds located at 9505 Pleasant Hill Road to connect to the water and sewer system of the City of Shreveport.
Any questions? If not, let's move on, please.
Resolution 187 authorizes Big G Properties LLC located at 6848 West Burt Coons Industrial Loop to connect to the water and sewer system of the City of Shreveport.
Any questions?
None.
All right, well, let's move on.
Section 9 is regular agenda legislation. This is sub-A, resolutions on second reading and final passage, or which will require only one reading. Resolution 160 declares the intention of the City of Shreveport to proceed with the issuance of not to exceed $75 million street improvement bonds in one or more series for the purpose of financing the cost of constructing, paving, and improving public streets in the city, including utilities, relocation, and incidental sewer and drainage work required thereby. Make an application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for approval of such bonds, and otherwise providing with respect there to, this matter was previously postponed and has an amendment.
Any questions first by the council, and then we'll, if the mayor has any observations, then we'll come back to the council one more time. Anybody on the council have any?
Well, I just, go ahead.
Well, the way that we left it last time, we were gonna postpone until after the budget meetings, that's what was voted on last time, I believe, or that was what was presented.
Couldn't maybe Mayor Glover talk about it a little bit more for us?
And I just, I guess I had a question, too, of...
Before we get to you, Mayor, let's, let's make sure, let's make sure we get everybody from the council first, and then we'll come back.
It may be answered in the mayor's comments, but I think what I wanted to ask was just, as I understand this, it's like a preliminary measure to allow us to consider moving forward, and there would still be some additional votes required to move it forward, so I just wanted some clarification on that, if that's accurate or not.
Before you speak, Mayor, Rose, you have any comment?
No, I'd just like to hear the mayor talk a little bit more in depth about it, again.
Okay, and then, Sam, anybody, Mike? If not, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I think to more accurately depict or detail what Councilman Oliver Jenkins just referenced, I think the motion to postpone was in response to a prior motion which had been offered, I believe, by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, which was to table, and as we shared, tabling it was effectively killing it, in that it would not give us the opportunity to be able to move on it. Obviously, it could be pulled off the table, but would take a unanimous vote to be able to do so, and essentially doesn't give us the option of being able to initiate this process. We have said for a very long time, and our citizens, I think, have said the same as well, despite the fact that we have a significant number of dollars that came out of the 2011 bond proposal, despite the fact that we have increased our revenue stream from our franchise fee and dedicated store towards our street improvements, there is still a need to do more in the City of Shreveport with regard to our streets. We've done the pavement management system program, which gives us the ability to be able to determine which are our streets that are in greater need of work. We understand that just simply taking our street proceeds like we did from the 2011 bond proposal and dividing them by seven, and giving each district an equal amount of money to go out and do work within the districts will not get us very far in tackling a half-billion-dollar street program. For those folks out there who are attuned and listening to what's going on around the city, you know, you hear from the folks across this city, they appreciate the work that's being done, they recognize that there is more work that needs to be done, and that work is not going to be done unless there ultimately ends up being action taken by the City of Shreveport. And this particular effort starts the process. It doesn't complete it, but it's just like you saw with the second bond sale, just like you saw with the $75 million in revenue bonds for the water and sewer work, just as you're seeing with the refinancing of the water and sewer bonds. This allows us to begin to start taking those steps that can lead us towards there. Other than that, we're just continuing to talk about it, give lip service to it, but not actually doing anything about it. Now, what is significant about this, and I think I've shared with most of you, is that this gives us a chance, as staff has suggested, and the number is up to $75 million, what actually would be projected would be somewhere in about a $45 million range, and the suggestion being that the 40% of those dollars would be, 40% of the dollars would be spent on our arterials, that 30% would be spent on the collectors, and that 30% be spent on the neighborhood streets, and that what that would do would give us a chance to be able to hit every level of the problem that we're facing across the city right now. And essentially, guys, as I said, we have talked about this, we have bounced it back and forth, we had a larger vision for doing 100-plus million dollars at one time, you know, we did not move forward on that. We've now adjusted this back to a number that is somewhere less than 50 million, that's still only about a tenth of the half-billion-dollar problem that's out there. And so, we believe that this gives us a chance, without going back out for a general obligation bond proposal, to come up with a means and mechanism of being able to fund more streets and more places across the entirety of the City of Shreveport than we can do by just simply doing a pay-as-you-go approach. And for that reason, we're asking for the opportunity to be able to continue this down the road, allow us to be able to take this step, and if we get to a point in the next two, three series of steps that have to be taken, where the council does not support, does not believe that it's the wise and prudent thing to do, then we still have the ability to be able to not go forward, but we can't get off of center right now if we don't manage to be able to pass Resolution 160.
And I had a follow-up question on that. Can somebody clarify on the amendment? I mean, I see it's just replacing some language, it looks like just technicalities, but just want to make sure...
Terry did that, and I believe that they are just basically technicalities.
So, there's no substantial change to what the intent is or anything?
So, Councilman Shine, in order to move forward with this, we would have to take it... I mean, what would be the process of putting it back on?
You'd have to get enough votes to pull it off the...
Of course, but how soon?
As soon as you want to be. If you have some... If you got the vote.
The chairman, thanks for clarification. It's just postponed, which is why we were...
It was just postponed. It wasn't tabled.
It wasn't tabled. It was postponed.
It could be voted on tomorrow.
Yeah, but if you got enough votes to...
There will be a majority of the council to vote in favor of it tomorrow to give us a chance to be able to go out and do up to $75 million with the street work in the city.
So...
Well, Councilman Shine, I'm going to be asking my fellow council persons to consider putting this back on the agenda on tomorrow and supporting it.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah. Consider supporting it on tomorrow, give it some real deep thought. District A along with District B and some others, unlike some of you are suffering. And we really would appreciate your cooperation if you would help us move forward with this resolution. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no more concerns, we'll move on. Mr. Sibley?
Resolution 177 acknowledges the city council has reviewed the 2014 Internal Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Report concerning the North Regional and Lucas Waste Water Plants.
Any questions or concerns?
You have a good streak.
If not, let's move on, please.
Number 178 authorizes the use of certain city-owned equipment by Herbie Kay's Restaurant.
It's for a fundraising event that they're holding over at Herbie Kay's, and it's something we've done in the past. So if there's any questions, let me...
Any questions or concerns? If not, let's move on, please.
Resolution 179 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to alcoholic beverages on November 13, 2014, relative to dispensing, sale, and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages in the 700 block of Texas Street during the instruments succumbing award ceremony.
And this is for, I don't know who may have attended or not, but last year it was held at Southern's Downtown Campus, and it's an event where the Tepatinas Foundation presents instruments to local high schools. So it's a great event, and they want to have a festive style to it this year. So appreciate your support on that one.
Festive style.
Should be noted, Mr. Chairman, should be noted that the Tepatinas Foundation is headed by Roland Van Ternikowski, who is the individual who's developing the three properties at the end of the 600 block of Texas. He's also the one who has operated the very successful Tepatinas Music Co-op. But for those of us, Mr. Shine, and I don't want to date myself, but at 49, I'd never actually seen un-bricked windows in the Sears building there, and never knew there were glass display windows along the side either. So I had to go down a couple of Sundays ago and just marvel at all of that. But it is that group of individuals who's responsible for all the wonderful activity that's taking place there within the 600 block of Texas.
It's a long way from the low mark right now.
Long way from the low mark. I definitely remember the low mark.
Yeah.
I used to catch the jitney in front of the low mark.
All right. Now, Mr. Mayor, you might have to explain to Michael what a jitney is. He doesn't...
I've heard part of that story before.
Yeah, they wouldn't let him...
We've been here for four years. We hear it every quarter. That's the joy. It's kind of a quarterly cultural update for us.
They couldn't run jitneys out in... They couldn't run jitneys out in Broadmoor, huh?
They didn't need them.
Yeah. They couldn't run them out there, so, you know. Damn, Mr. Thompson is going to send you an email for correspondence from Murray Law. Okay.
Continue, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, move on, please.
Resolution 180 commemorates the life and accomplishments of William Hardy "Bill" Bush, a native of Shreveport and former Shreveport City Councilman.
Mr. Thompson, I would hope that you would be able to get somebody from his family to come down tomorrow.
I'll see. I know one of his daughter lives in Texas, and I'm not sure the other one lives here.
Does it... Rebecca, is it...
You can?
Wonderful.
Please do. Bill served this city extremely well, not only on the city council, but as a top-notch citizen. And I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge Bill for what he had... contributions that he had made to the city. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe Bill was a lifelong, because he went to Buried High School.
He was born in Shreveport.
He grew up in City Grove? Well, you know he's a lifelong citizen there.
But I do think that if for some reason they couldn't come, we'd probably consider postponing it so they could be here to do it.
Yeah.
I think I can get one sister and one brother.
Please. Yeah, because if Bill grew up in City Grove, man, that's almost like growing up on a couple of roads.
Except City Grove actually became its own city for a while.
That's true.
City came in and exceded us before we had the chance to do that.
That's true. And Bill contributed. His music was just fantastic here, you know, for years. And like I say, I served with Bill on the city council, and Bill was a fine fellow, extremely, extremely fine fellow. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Sibley, you want to move on, please?
Resolution 181 certifies compliance with the state of Louisiana Off-System Bridge Replacement Program.
Any questions? If not, let's proceed, Mr. Sibley.
Number 182 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated property as surplus. This is regarding Districts B, C, G.
Any comments, questions? If not, please, let's move on.
Resolution 183 accepts the findings of a public hearing as a result of the notice of intention to issue, sell, and deliver not exceeding $75 million water and sewer revenue bonds in one or more series for the purpose of financing the cost of acquisition and construction of improvements, extensions, and replacements to the water and sewer utility system of the city and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Any questions or comments?
There's a public hearing on this tomorrow, too, right?
That's correct.
But you have any questions now, we'll entertain those.
Just... Well, I just have the one question, Sue, and I missed it, but I'm sure you said it. Sue, we didn't do a public hearing before on this, is basically the issue?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. By the way, should add, very well done on that... on the interest rate on those bonds. It was impressive. It was a good week.
Charlotte and Sharica did an outstanding job.
Thank you, Sharica.
I just stood behind them and frowned.
Okay.
Frowned.
Whatever you did worked. Congratulations.
You know, when you do those kind of jobs, Sharica, you know, you always look for a raise.
Don't go saying that.
No, I said you look for one. I didn't say nothing but you get one.
Pardon me?
Yeah, because Dale stopped me from saying that you get one. He just... Dale said, I always say that you can look for one. Looking for it and getting it are two different things in there right there.
That's correct.
Okay, then.
Continue, Mr. Chairman, please. Resolution 184 approves the fees of professionals in conjunction with the issuance of $93,500,000 General Obligation Bonds Series 2014 for the purposes set forth in the propositions approved in an election held on April 2, 2011. I believe that's the matter that we have some good news to report on.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask Sharica Field to give you all a quick brief on that.
Please, Sharica. You know, make it like you make your prayers in church. I'm told they be short and to the point.
Okay. Just for the benefit of the public also, looking at the sale that happened a couple weeks ago, the city received a 3.28% interest rate, which has improved from what we got in 2011, which is 3.99%. Due to the demand for the city's bonds, we received premium bonds, which is basically more money for what we actually will be paying back, and that's going to be about $21 million between the first and second sale that the city will have in project funds versus what the voters approve for. So that's definitely something that is positive, that the city will be able to do more projects than it initially intended that it would go for.
Sharica, you are smart. Okay, Dale?
Resolution 199 supports the concept of Atlanta-Jackson-Dallas High-Speed Rail System. This is a matter that Mr. Thompson and the K-Rew would ask to be removed and replaced with a title that includes Shreveport in that listing of our rail, High-Speed Rail System.
And, Mr. Sibley, I might have a...
Amendment and...
Yeah, to make sure we include amendment and grambling in that.
Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, just for background, myself and the other mayors along the I-20 corridor have been developing a connection dialogue over the last several years, and new mayor and council in Jackson took this measure up just a couple of weeks ago, passed it, has no commitment to the city at this point, is just advancing the concept, still supporting the ideas of trying to make advances with the Amtrak system and what have you, but also recognizing that if you ever end up with a scenario of a true high-speed rail system in the U.S., it's going to take a dedicated rail system, not one that's shared between passenger and freight and what have you. And this concept says that you already have a federally-controlled public right-of-way that runs along the interstate quarters of this country, and the idea of being able to parallel one in the area that's already federally-controlled along the I-20 corridor gives us a chance to be able to put in a system. And it's believed that connecting the communities of Atlanta and Dallas would be one of the best and most logical places to do that, and obviously those of us in between would benefit greatly from it.
Did you have a chance, Mr. Mayor, to speak to Oliver and my friend on this, the distinguished state representative from Dale, what is it, District 4?
About Roy Barra?
Yeah, Roy, is that... Is it District 4?
Two.
Oh, District 2. If we get a chance to get his wisdom on this, you know, he's a man of much wisdom.
We're carving out a block of time to be able to sit and...
Please.
Absolutely.
Please do. And if you get a chance, I would hope that you would have your recorder in there so you could record some of the wisdom, and I know it would probably do me some good. I don't know about Oliver over there, but I know it would do me some good.
All right. I'm certainly a proponent of rail.
Thanks.
As it... Well, you know, for somebody that lived in Europe for six years, I've seen it work very, very well. Now, obviously, our distances are further apart here, so that has to be taken into account for the infrastructure to pay off, but as a concept, I'm certainly all for it.
Because I think from between Atlanta and Dallas, it would pay off.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I think it would actually... And especially if the flight fees keep on going up, it would pay off good, because this is just amazing what you have to pay now for an airline ticket, you know.
Continue, Mr. Chairman.
That high speed moves fast, too. I mean, you know, with the... Considering by the time you board a plane and take off and go through all the process there, rail's pretty close in time.
All right. Okay, Dale?
Section B, Mr. Chairman, is introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to October 28, 2014. Resolution 188 approves the 2015 Downtown Development Authority Program of Warp.
Okay. Any comments on that? If not, Dale, let's move, please.
Number 189 ratifies the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Film Prize LLC.
Jeff, any comment?
Just to say, you know, again, this has been such a beneficial event, and everything this team has done has been a great success and has resulted in really good economic impact for the city. It's exciting to be a part of it. I know I saw briefly a few folks down there this weekend from... that are in the room now, and I think anybody who hasn't been really should check it out because it's amazing the energy this creates in our city and the people it brings to town.
Okay, Dale?
Resolution 190 authorizes the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Shreveport Metropolitan Ballet.
Sam, any comments? I've been a student of the ballet for quite some time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do want to note that for both 191, as well as 192, as well as 193, there is a little line in each one of those that you should pay careful attention to. I had inserted this particular go-around. It will entail at least one council member participating in each of those efforts at some point, so...
Wait. Wait a minute now. Wait a minute.
I can tell you which one I'm volunteering for. Let me make sure.
You've got to be generous.
The one that I'm not in.
That's the gone-away present that I thought I...
The 190, that's the 190. Don't look at me for 190.
Now, I'd like to see Art with some tights on and singing. Yeah, I think that would go well.
All right.
We'd have a whole city of men turning out to come over.
For a second, can we go back to 189 now?
Sure.
So is that retroactive for 2014 is what that is, really?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. I mean, it makes sense. It was a little...
Okay.
Thanking people yesterday at the brunch, I knew we were not being thanked, and I wondered about that, and this answers my question. We were being thanked for in-kind donations, absolutely, and spa and the rest of it.
Couldn't cut the check just yet.
I got...
And, okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, the mayor just referenced Resolution 191 and 192. 191 authorizes an agreement with the Shreveport Opera, and 192 authorizes a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Shreveport Symphony.
Okay.
And these are primarily for the use of the space at the various venues.
Shelley, are you doing any singing? We'll be there. We will be there.
I was going to say, I'm going to sign you up for one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for clarification with Oliver, Councilman Jenkins, and the rest of the council, we have been financial sponsors in all these years.
Previous... I did know that. Absolutely did know that. Okay.
And I think in earlier events, they did acknowledge us as a sponsor, though this is retroactive. So that could have been just a mistake of too much energy going on.
Okay, Dale, please.
Resolution 193 authorizes the purchasing agent to dispose by public auction of surplus vehicles and items.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Proceed, please.
194 authorizes the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Red River Desk and Derek Club.
Any questions? If not, proceed.
195 authorizes the submission of the 2015 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Okay, please.
Resolution 196 amends the cooperative endeavor agreement with the Catahoula Parish's Port Commission relative to providing water and sewerage to the Port of Shreveport Boja.
Any questions? If not, please.
Resolution 197 repeals Resolution Number 168 of 2014, authorizes the employment of special legal counsel to provide legal advice, counsel and representation to the city of Shreveport, ratifying any and all work previously performed, otherwise providing with respect thereto. This is in relation to the hiring of Mr. Tim Hardy on the landfill matter. There was a procedural error in his initial hiring.
We asked you to adopt it too soon, and so... a meeting too soon, so they're going back and doing it over.
So are we actually voting for this? Is it repeal of it? Or is it we were appealing and then authorizing another thing?
If you're pulling the old and approving a new one.
Correct.
But you're going to ratify anything he's done in between the two points.
Exactly.
And then one question about the rate, and not that I think it's particularly high for an attorney, but I do notice that it's higher than other attorneys.
It's a specialty area, if I know.
Okay, and so there's a category, there's some kind of line of reasoning involved.
Exactly.
It is the same rate that we were charged for the EPA deal.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, and just like I said...
Environmental law rate.
...to make sure with what the guys on the street are getting, but it is a little higher than what... Okay.
But you're right, because of the specialty.
Okay. I just didn't know what the criteria was that... Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Resolution 198... Resolution 198, Mr. Chairman, authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Independence Bowl Foundation Incorporated. This is regarding the new scoreboard at Independence Stadium. We do have Ms. Setters here with us today, any questions?
You all want to come forward and share?
She also has her new intern with her, Mr. Chairman, who I think will be especially pleasing to both you and Councilman McCullough, that she is a student at Grambling.
All right. That's true. And matter of fact, her grandmother and I were in school together. Just, no, that's just a few years ago.
It's too late, Ron, as I know.
Yeah, I knew Ron, I knew Ron was going to come in with something like that.
He met Sunday School.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
First grade.
Okay, you want to introduce?
Yes, I'm happy to introduce Carolyn Hill. She actually interned with us last year during Bowl Week. We started an internship program for the fall with Grambling State this year. It'll happen each year after this. And so she had already sent in a resume to us in advance, and so it worked out perfectly that we could hire her for a fall internship this year. And I can't say enough, she's been absolutely fantastic.
Hey, Sally, you want to say a word? Now, she was tremendous athlete up at Northwood, yeah. And sometimes she, you know, kind of run over some of those girls. I'm just kidding.
Yes, sir. Well, I just want to say that I'm glad to be here. This is a tremendous opportunity. This lady here has treated me like family, and I'm just proud to be with the Independence Bowl Foundation. It's a great foundation. I'm thankful to be here.
So good to have you.
Thank you so much.
So good to have you.
Mr. Chairman, I did read over the information concerning the scoreboard. Had an opportunity to talk to Ms. Regal about it a little bit this morning, too. It appears to me to be a good idea and a good economic approach to what we wanted to do. And I think anytime we can upgrade the stadium along these lines, we should take advantage of the opportunity to do so, so surely have my support on it.
Shelley, did you want to say anything?
I have just one. Some, where does the, but it doesn't necessarily have to be, it can be Missy that answers the question. So the rest of the balance is coming out of the foundation? Are you raising that separately, or?
Yes, primarily through advertising. We're at a point right now with the existing board that it's difficult to sell any advertising on it because it's in disrepair. It's 13 years old. That's a long time for a scoreboard. So that's where the majority of it'll come from. And we were also discussing earlier that it should open opportunities for other events in the stadium to be able to generate additional revenue, too, because you're talking about an LED board now as opposed to static boards. So you can change it out for whatever type of event is there.
Gotcha, gotcha. So it's not limited to the boxes of score this and this?
Exactly. You have templates and panels that you build, and you can switch things out throughout the game. Plus, it includes ribbon boards that'll be on the face in the South End Zone, and also a new sound system, which we all know is desperately needed.
The ribbon boards are new. I mean, that would be an addition that we haven't had before. So it gives us additional opportunities for sponsorship sales. It also does some work to the I-20 board to upgrade it also. So this package includes all of that. The sound system is a bonus. We didn't think we were going to be able to do it. After we got, the bowl got the bids in, the sound system, they could afford it within their budget, so. And just as a reminder, this benefits everybody, not just the Independence Bowl. Every high school soccer game, baseball game, any other game that along the border, we'll have the opportunity to have this new scoreboard. And we think this is a good way to, for the city to be able to afford to replace it.
And Dale, Sam was saying that I might be to buy a little block saying congratulations to the next mayor.
Could very well, could very well do that.
Yeah.
Shelley, clarify, and guys, with, you use terms like ribbon board so that it may not be something that...
Have you been to the Superdome lately? Gosh, Texas high school stadiums these days have them. They're, you know, kind of a narrow board that'll fit on the face of the South End. You advertise them, you put scores them. The great thing about today's technology is it's basically a receiver, TV that's a receiver. So anything you program, it can be anything. I mean, if you've been to the Superdome, you've seen that scoreboard.
They're also at basketball arenas as well? You see that?
They're not as big as a scoreboard, but they can scroll things, they can flash, they can do all kinds of innovative advertising.
Just so we'll know, tomorrow, is there a way that we could see like a markup of what it's going to look like?
I think Missy brought you.
Please.
That'd be good, or if you want, if you can digitize it and show it tomorrow, that's nice.
Does the manufacturer have a YouTube presentation of any sort?
We can bring it tomorrow and put it up on the screen. That way we can have it.
We can find a YouTube presentation of some sort, Will.
We can pass this out today to you all, and then we'll do one tomorrow. The other thing is, there is a push to get it in before the bowl this year, which we always like, nothing better than a deadline. And actually, to get it in before the high school All-Star game, it'll give us an opportunity to run it there before we run it for the Independence Bowl, kind of a run, and to make sure we know how to operate it all.
Good. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, Sibyl, please.
Well, Section C, introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to October 28, 2014. Ordinance 108 amends and replaces ordinance number 69 of 1988 to change Section 1 of this ordinance from a stop intersection to a four-way stop intersection. And Councilman Jenkins, I believe our engineering guys may want to speak with you to consider perhaps a signal at that location, but they're looking, like to talk with you a little bit about that.
Okay, happy to talk with them whenever they want.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance 109 is an ordinance to amend and reenact sections, certain sections of Chapter 94, the Code of Ordinances, relative to utilities. I believe this one primarily involves the conservation rates that were developed as a final result of the rate study. Ms. Feathersden is here, can speak more to it if any of the council members have questions.
I certainly have some questions because I don't understand what we're, I guess, the objective, first of all, was kind of my, I mean, it kind of caught me off guard when I read it over the weekend, so.
Barbara, if you will provide an overview, it is only for introductions, so we'll have time to get into more details, but give an idea of the purposes behind it and what this legislation accomplishes, please.
The purpose of the legislation in general is to implement the water conservation rates that were discussed at the Infrastructure Committee meetings over the summer. So the bulk of the ordinances is just that, is to implement those water conservation rates. There's a couple areas we needed to do cleanup, and we can provide you with a red line document. There were a couple of paragraphs that needed some verbiage changes, and some paragraphs that needed to be deleted. And then the bulk of it is just rates, a couple of the miscellaneous fees with regards to industrial users for the five-year permit fees went up $500, $1,500 over those five years. And then the restaurant fee, which pays for our pretreatment program, went up from $100 a year to $150 a year. And then our NSF charges, when someone sends in payment in non-sufficient funds, went up from $25 to $40, which is more of the industry standard. And as far as monetary, those were the only changes. Everything else was minor grammatical or some paragraphs that were supposed to be removed previously, and we missed those.
So the question is, are these, so we made some rate changes. Now, are we making more rate changes, or are we just incorporating those rate changes into a document?
Those, what we've done is, is not a change in overall, these are all revenue-neutral on the water side. There are no changes whatsoever on the sewer. It was only on the water side, and based on the study that was done by the consultant, these are all revenue-neutral. They will raise the same amount of revenues, and they're not a rate increase on the water side.
But they may increase some users individually.
Some users, depending on, at the higher tiers, some users, other users, say on the lower levels, who use, say, 3,000 gallons to 6,000 gallons, will actually, actually see an overall same bill next year within 30 cents, as opposed to seeing an increased bill, because sewer rates are going up 14% starting January 1. This basically for anything under, say, 5,000 gallons is a 30 cent or less increase on their bill, as opposed to a few dollars based on the sewer rates. And that's just that those lower tiers were charging a lower quantity charge than previously. We're also balancing that with the increase in the monthly fee, so some of our revenues, more of our revenues are coming from the monthly fee than the actual quantity fee, which is an issue that we had this year with the, with the water use being significantly lower than previous years due to the cool wet, due to the cool wet situation.
Barbara, perhaps back up and talk about the basic idea of a conservation rate in conjunction with everything we've been talking about. I know we talked about it during the committee, but kind of review the whole purpose in doing it while we're looking at it.
One of the reasons that we're looking at it is, is of course to, you know, to get folks to pay attention to their water use. This is not a water conservation rate that they have like in Florida, maybe, or Arizona or places like that. It's not that stringent, but it does benefit those who use smaller amounts of water, particularly under 10,000 gallons of water, which is more of your, your, your smaller homes, your lower-income folks, the people on limited incomes, your retired folks, that there's one or two people in the home. It reduces their bill a little bit. Our water bills were not huge to begin with, but it's something that looks at those, and people who say use, say, 10,000 gallons of water a month, you know, have a family of four, they use 10,000 gallons of water a month, that first 3,000 gallons is charged at that lower conservation rate. And it's only until you start getting to where you're at that 10,000 to 15,000 gallons, you hit that higher tier, over 14,000 gallons, where it's significantly more than what the quantity rate was previously.
So those on the lower, the limited income, the lower income, this conservation rate should actually benefit them, assuming they use less water than other users?
I mean, I've been a proponent of the water conservation methods from the beginning. I guess what I was kind of trying to ascertain is, did we kind of agree to this when we had the water rate study, or, and if we did, that's one thing. If we didn't, I think in fairness, I'd like to maybe bring, I propose bringing it back to the committee, just because that's the way we've done everything else. But I don't have to be the one that's making that decision on my own. But every other thing we did in this committee, I don't understand why we wouldn't do this along the...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I'd be more than happy to take this back to the committee and do a presentation and kind of go through the whole, go through all of the steps. We did want to go ahead and get it introduced because we're trying to get the rates in place for next year. This is generally the rates that the committee saw previously and seemed fairly happy with. But I would like to actually come back to the committee before you actually vote on it. That would be great.
I think it'd be good to give the committee a chance to review it. I mean, it has been a few months since we had the last...
It has been a while, and I have the final, I do finally have the final report, which we went back and forth on some of the smaller parts and pieces with the consultants to make sure that we were absolutely clear. Again, particularly after this year and this summer, where we've seen, we've seen the revenue fluctuations based on the weather conditions, and our revenues are down because it's been cool and it's been wet, and the water use has been much lower. We tasked the consultants with looking at the monthly fee and having a little higher portion of the total without making an overall increase, you know, decreasing the quantity rates and then increasing the monthly fee, so we could see those revenues a little bit more stable, you know, when we do have these unusually mild, or if it's unusually hot and there's more water usage, it's still the same. You know, we don't get those peaks and spikes with those higher rates.
So Barbara?
Yes, ma'am.
Based on the water sewage rate chart that was submitted and put out into the communities, what you're presenting today deviates from that, or are there some slight changes from what we've actually put out into the community?
Right. This is, this would basically, we have not touched the sewer rates with regards to what was done in council last year, but the water rates would charge less, as you use less water, say, 3,000 gallons or 6,000 gallons, that charge is less than what we are currently charging. And as you increase your water quantity usage, you know, that charge increases. And the intention is to be revenue-neutral from the previous rate increase.
So how are we going to educate the community? I mean, is there, what are we going to do to educate the people?
We would, we would put out, particularly, I think, sample bills are the best way to show how this is calculated and what you, if you use this much, for example, currently, if you use 3,000 gallons of water and the same amount in sewer, and not including the 50 cent security fee or the recycling, but currently, you know, the bill is $36.15. And in January 1 of next year, the sewer rate increases by 14%, but at that 3,000-gallon level, because of those conservation rates, their bill will actually, for 3,000 gallons, will actually be 33 cents less, even though there's a significant increase on the sewer side. And so it's intentional to those low-water-use folks.
I'm glad to hear that.
It just somewhat kind of minimizes the 14% increase in sewer for low-to-moderate water users. And even on the upper ends, even if you're, say, you're using 20,000 gallons of water in a month, which would probably include some watering, you know, your bill is, would increase $26, and that includes 14% increase in sewer. So it's very minor changes, but the structure of it is conducive to those low-to-moderate water users, as well as allowing us to have a more flat revenue collections.
If you recall, if you recall during the committee discussions when we did the revision of the legislature, one of the things that was a big concern was removal of the 3,000-gallon exemption. You know, and we're trying to find some way to try and mitigate against that for the lower, lower-end users, and this is one of those things that will impact that. So when we go back to the committee, we can reconnect the dots between the earlier discussion now, because this, this whole measure is designed to try and minimize the impact of those new rates. So we think the citizens, particularly those lower water users, will be pleased with the conservation rates, and that's the whole purpose behind it.
That's what I wanted to hear.
This should benefit most users.
Exactly.
Most users are that lower-end user, and they should be, they should benefit from this.
Our folks in Cherokee Park would be glad to hear that, Barbara.
Absolutely.
All right, yes.
Barbara, how are we calculating sewer charges now? For instance, if somebody's water bill or water rate is 3,000 gallons in the winter, but it's 10,000 in the summer, how will the sewer be charged?
The sewer, the sewer, there were no changes to how the sewer is charged. We still do what we call our average winter consumption, and that, and this is for residential only. And that takes November, December, January, and February, your water usage for those four months. It, you drop off the high month, you drop off the low month, and you average the other two months. And that's what they get charged beginning in May, that changes on their bills, and that's what they get charged for the rest of the year, until the calculation is done again. So the sewer bills are based on that winter consumption rather than the summer consumption, where you obviously have a lot more outdoor activity and outdoor use.
So that averages, what will go up to 14%?
Yes, that, that quantity charge goes up, you know, for that usage that they have, that if they use, if their average winter consumption is 3,000 gallons or four or five, that quantity charge is going up January 1, 2015, based on what was in the previous ordinance. We've not changed anything on the sewer side.
Average winter consumption is figured from November, December, January, February?
Yes.
And toss out the I-low.
Drop out the high, you drop out the low, and you average the other two, and that's extremely reasonable.
Oh, yeah. I like that.
Thank you, Barbara. We'll look forward to the committee meeting so that we can move this as quickly.
All right, Dale, please.
I believe we had ordinance 110. It amends the 2014 capital improvements budget. This is a sportran ordinance, and it basically recognizes some additional federal funding.
Okay.
Number 111 amends the 2014 capital improvement budget. This is regarding the runway rehabilitation project. This is at the airports, and again, federally and/or state-funded.
All right, any comments? If not, we have the directive, the... If not, we have the director of the airport over there.
Chairman?
Yes, sir?
At the latter part of the day's meeting, I do want to bring Mr. Francis up today. October 13th, 2014 represents the end of what is known as the Wright Amendment. The Wright Amendment was a measure passed by former Texas Congressman Jim Wright, which restricted the locations, the states, to which planes leaving from Love Field could actually go to. I believe there were four states, of which Louisiana was one, I think, New Mexico, and two others, that I can't remember.
It said the adjacent states, so...
The adjacent states, so...
New Mexico, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Louisiana, I believe.
Got it.
Why don't you, you want to bring him up now?
If you would, Mr. Francis?
The increase in passenger.
There has been a great deal of discussion about the possibility of what the end of the Wright Amendment could represent. I had been led to believe that it might at some point open up the possibility for additional opportunities for the Shreveport Regional Airport. Had it marked on my calendar and reached out several weeks ago to Mr. Francis to say, now, this means that we can now go and make a legitimate case for why Southwest should be coming to Shreveport. And I waited with bated breath for him to tell me that, Mayor, you are absolutely correct. Once we get this dreaded Wright Amendment out of the way, it will position Shreveport to be able to step up and become a Southwest community. Unfortunately, Mr. Shine, member of the council, he told me that not only would things not get any better, but that the actual possibility exists that things could get worse based on the increased opportunity that this will now afford Southwest flights departing from Love Field to be able to go to someplace other than the adjoining states that the Wright Amendment limited them to, so...
Shoot it at us.
I was hoping he was going to say you ought to call Jackson, because they're, they got their own issue right now.
Which is one of the communities that has been lost.
Yeah.
Service to Southwest. So with that, Brian, give us a brief recap in terms of what the implications are of the ending of the Wright Amendment, and as the CEO just suggested, there's also some good news in terms of our increased numbers and activity out at the Shreveport Airport. With that, Brian?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A pleasure to be here. As Mayor Glover stated, today was the end of the Wright Amendment, which had previously restricted air service to and from Love Field. I just pulled up an article to run down a quick update on what the end of the Wright Amendment meant for Southwest Airlines specifically at Dallas Love Field today. So effective today, Southwest added 22 flights to seven airports from Love Field, which were previously not served nonstop. Those airports included Baltimore, Chicago Midway, Denver, Las Vegas, Los Angeles, Orlando, Florida, and Washington Reagan National Airport. So that's in addition to the 118 flights that are going to other markets that Southwest was already serving nonstop from Love Field. Also, they'll be adding more service. On November 2nd, they will launch nonstop service to eight more cities: New York La Guardia, Atlanta, Fort Lauderdale, and Tampa Bay, Nashville, Tennessee, Phoenix, San Diego, and Santa Ana, California. Lastly, on January 6th, they will add service nonstop from Love Field to San Francisco and Oakland. So we're talking about 17 new cities receiving nonstop service from Love Field, which did not previously have nonstop service. Also, Virgin America, which is based in San Francisco, has moved all of its Dallas-Fort Worth service from DFW to Love Field effective today. That service in its existing form is, let's see here, three flights to San Francisco, three to Los Angeles, and they're also starting on today, three flights to Washington Reagan National Airport. In a few weeks, they'll add New York LaGuardia with four flights per day. So clearly, the scene is changing quite a bit at Love Field with the end of the Wright Amendment. And what I mentioned to Mayor Glover is that it may make Love Field even more attractive to some of those who are leaving the Shreveport area, needing to travel by air, and choosing to drive to Dallas. We've done a study, which was communicated to the committee back in December, I believe it was, and I think I also presented some of the information on that to the council early this year, that stated, we lose about 60 percent of the passengers that are either point-of- origin in the Shreveport, Ark-La-Tex area, or are bound for this area. We lose about 60 percent of those passengers to other airports. About 40 percent of those passengers are flying into or out of Dallas-area airports. So the Wright Amendment, with the lifting of any restrictions on service that's available there, could entice more people to actually drive to Dallas. Now, the flip side of that is there are really good things happening at Shreveport Regional. Through September, we're going to be releasing these numbers later this week, but through September, we're up about 10 percent in total passenger traffic at the airport, and that is about 40,000 total passengers. So that's very good news for this market, and I certainly do believe that we have some opportunities for growth. I don't necessarily believe that that growth is going to come from Southwest Airlines. As Councilman Jenkins stated, Southwest Airlines recently discontinued all service from Jackson, Mississippi, and that's a larger market than Shreveport. So after serving that market for over 10 years, they decided that it was no longer meeting their needs in terms of profitability. They were not able to operate the number of flights that they really needed to, to be profitable at Jackson, and so that service went away. It's really going away in favor of service to larger cities, such as Washington National. With US Airways and American Airlines merger, and the government requiring those two carriers to divest of a certain number of aircraft slots for arrivals and departures at Washington National, low-cost carriers were the winners, primarily Southwest and Virgin America. And so they needed to have more assets, more aircraft to deploy out of Washington, those two low-cost carriers did, than what they needed previously. So they're pulling those aircraft from some smaller markets and putting them into larger markets, such as Washington. And also, as I mentioned, all the markets that are seeing nonstop service effective today and over the next couple of months out of Love Field. So I do think we have opportunities for growth. I think a lot of that is going to come from our existing carriers, United, Delta, and American. We've been having discussions with all three of those carriers about opportunities for new routes out of Shreveport, as well as increases in capacity on existing service. As you know, Delta's flying nonstop to Atlanta now with, this month with two flights per day on aircraft that are equipped with first-class cabins, as well as larger overall aircraft serving up to 110 passengers each. American Airlines is flying to Dallas three times out of the seven flights per day right now, with aircraft also equipped with first class, a total of 63 seats, up from an average of 50 seats per flight for most of their, most of their aircraft serving Shreveport. We're also talking to United about the Denver service, which has performed incredibly well. It's now over two years old. We're trying to get either a larger aircraft, or perhaps a second flight operating on that route by spring or summer of next year. With the merger of US Airways and American, American now has a very large and successful hub at Charlotte, so that may be a growth opportunity for us to have access to the Charlotte hub through American Airlines and its merger with US Airways. And there are some other things out there as well. In terms of low-cost opportunities, low-cost carriers, I think carriers such as Frontier, Spirit, and Allegiant, which we already have serving Shreveport for the last eight years, I think they really constitute the best opportunities for us in terms of future growth in the low-cost carrier category. So I certainly believe that we have some, some great opportunities for growth out there, but I don't necessarily believe that the end of the Wright Amendment is necessarily going to help us. Certainly not in terms of getting service from Southwest. There may be at some point in time also service to markets such as New Orleans, which I think a lot of people would like to see back again. It's been 12 or 13 years since that service has been in place, but there is interest on behalf of a couple of regional carriers. They would fly probably 30-seat aircraft a couple of times a day, so that's something that is being considered right now. And we could very well see a carrier flying to Love Field at some point that would not necessarily have an agreement with Southwest, but the point would be to get some of those who are currently driving from Shreveport to Dallas to take this service over to Love Field and then connect on to either Southwest, or Virgin, or another one of the carriers operating there. So we're exploring a lot of things. A lot happens in terms of discussions behind the scenes that we don't talk a lot about publicly, but I believe very strongly that we have some, some good things yet to come, and certainly the rising passenger numbers are going to help in those efforts.
All right, any questions?
Chairman?
Well done.
Would just add one thing that may also end up having the potential to enhance the opportunities at the Shreveport Regional Airport, is that four years ago, former Mayor John Hussey chaired the Air Service Task Force. One of the recommendations was the formation of that nonprofit entity that would be able to serve as the fundraising mechanism that could be utilized to help do service enhancements. They represent one of the three entities that would benefit from the measure that will be on the ballot November 4th, if there is the increase in the hotel motel tax. The Air Service Alliance, along with the Independence Bowl, would be the ones that would essentially split, I believe, 37 and 1/2 percent of those proceeds, projected to come in somewhere in the neighborhood of about $1 million per year, that would be available for being able to go out and improve and enhance and expand the level and quality of air service at the Shreveport Regional Airport.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Brian, that's an excellent job.
This is Chairman, ordinance 112, abandons the west portion of View Street between Baker Street and Douglas Street in the WR Carter subdivision, section 37.
Okay, no comment. Move on, please.
Mr. Chairman, the next set of ordinances are the...
Hold on. Give me a little bit about why we're closing that.
That's, that's to allow for development of a project that community support programs has been working on. They previously had looked at doing that project a little bit south of the current location, but that location has some topographical and land quality issues, and so they relocated that to this area, and I think it'll be a great addition. It's high-quality housing for, you know, people with, that are sensitive populations, and so should be a great project and good addition to the neighborhood.
Okay, I remember that.
But it may be worth throwing a map in there of you or something, just for those of us.
Yeah, thank you for turning it back to what was previously brought before us, but it would be good to just see it again, because I don't think it affected anybody's residents down there with this.
It shouldn't be very impactful. In fact, there are a couple of neighbors in the area, but I think they've been aware of the process, and I don't think there's objections, so I think we will definitely, before we get to vote on it, we'll get some people to come with some additional information.
Yeah, I believe...
And Malcom's coming forward with the map.
Now, is anybody familiar with where, because I know View Street is not particularly a commonly used or noted street, so I want to make sure everybody knows where we are here, but we are...
Studio relative.
Yeah, where's Millennium?
Further south of this. So Caddo is the street, obviously, that runs there at the intersection of Common, and on the corner of Caddo and Common is where that location for the new Family Dollar is. So this is northwest of that, I guess, or west of that.
West?
Yeah, west of that. And this project was taken into consideration when that Family Dollar design was done, which is why I think you may remember there was some discussion about some additional sidewalks and bike racks being added, that was in part to address what we knew would be some forthcoming development in the area.
Anything else you want to add to that?
No, if, the only thing I could say is, if you want me to get another map that shows where Millennium is, I'll be happy to do that, or if you're satisfied with this, just let me know your pleasure.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right.
I have a tool that I can't advertise for here publicly, that I can make a quick update on.
Continue, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
The next set of ordinances are not, are to be adopted no later than December 15, 2014. They are the budget ordinances for the 2015 budget, including number 113, which is the 2015 Capital Projects Fund budget, number 114, which is the 2015 Riverfront Development Fund budget, 115 is the General Fund budget, 116 is the retained risk fund budget, number 117 is the Metropolitan Planning Commission Fund budget, number 118 is Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget, number 119 is the Grants Special Revenue Fund budget, number 120, the Shreveport Redevelopment Agency Special Revenue Fund budget, number 121, the Downtown Entertainment Economic Development Special Revenue Fund budget, number 122, the Golf Enterprise Fund budget, number 123, the Airport Enterprise Fund budget, number 124, the Water and Sewerage Fund budget, number 125, budget funding contractual services provided to Sportran by Metro Management Associates, number 126, the Downtown Parking Enterprise Fund budget, number 127, the Convention Center Enterprise Fund budget, number 128, the Convention Center Hotel Enterprise Fund budget, number 129, the Debt Service Fund budget, number 130, the Streets Special Revenue Fund budget, and number 131, the Downtown Development Authority budget.
Dale?
Yes, sir.
I don't know how we've been doing that, but I would hope that we could get this. Is it anybody in here from the Shreveport Times? Mr. Thompson, we didn't scan them up there. Dale, I would hope, it should be somebody tomorrow, I would hope that you could get a copy of this to them and let them print it, so they can see that we run a very transparent ship down here.
Yes, they actually have a copy of the budget and the ordinances, but, and we will also send out releases with the hearing schedule, all the public meeting schedules, et cetera, so...
Please, please, Dale.
Yes, sir, we will do that.
Please. Okay, if not, Dale, let's move on, please.
Section D is ordinances on second reading and final passage. Number 95, amends the 2014 capital improvements budget. This is regarding the Port and Delaware lift stations.
Any questions? If not, let's move.
Number 96, amends the 2014 budget for the MPC Special Revenue Fund.
If not, let's move, please.
Ordinance 98 authorizes the city to close and restrict vehicular access to Lake Street from Commerce Street to Sideport Center. This one is subject to the public hearing that we've asked to be postponed for one meeting.
Okay, let's move, please.
Ordinance 99, amends and supplements Resolution Number 131 of 1984, adopted on June 12, 1984, as amended, acknowledging and approving the issuance of not exceeding 75 million water and sewer revenue bonds in one or more series on behalf of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds, pledging revenues of the system to secure such bonds, prescribing the form, certain terms, and conditions of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Dale, did you skip 98 and 97?
No, sir. I don't have 97. Let me refresh.
There's not a 97.
I think 97 is 199, it's the same as Resolution 190.
So we don't have to remove it? It's already been removed?
It's been removed from the electronic agenda. It's not been removed from this agenda.
On the paper agenda, we still have 97?
Yes, we do.
So even though you don't have it on your electronic agenda, we'll have to remove 97. It's really Resolution 177, but I'm missing it now, so when I do it tomorrow, you'll remember.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Dale?
Ordinance 100, the straight R.
Let me check something. I'll come back if I need to.
Okay. Ordinance 100, amends and supplements Resolution Number 131 of 1984, adopted on June 12, 1984, as amended. It acknowledges and approves the issuance of not exceeding 76,700,000 water and sewer revenue refunding bonds in one or more series on behalf of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds, pledging revenues of the system to secure such bonds, prescribing the form, certain terms, and conditions of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Any questions? If not, please, we'll dismiss them.
One question. So for the, so we don't need to do a public hearing on the refundings, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Dale?
Ordinance 101, authorizes the incurring of debt and issuance of not exceeding $27,500, million, five-hundred thousand dollars of general obligation refunding bonds in one or more series of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form, terms and conditions of said bonds, designating the date, denomination, and place of payment of said bonds, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. There is one amendment.
Okay, no questions, proceed.
Ordinance one oh two declares the city's intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for the Shreveport Commons Project.
Okay, uh, Dale?
Ordinance one oh three is annexation tag number fourteen dash zero four. It enlarges the limits and boundaries of the City of Shreveport, a thirty-two-point-one-four acre tract of land located west of North Ferry Road and south of Southern Loop, located in section twenty-nine, Caddo Parish, Louisiana.
Questions? If not, proceed.
Ordinance one oh four is annexation tag number fourteen dash zero five. It enlarges the limits and boundaries of the City of Shreveport, a fourteen-point-four acre tract of land located at thirty-one forty-two Bert Coons Industrial Loop in section five, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. Both these matters are subject to the public hearing scheduled for tomorrow.
Ron?
Which one are we looking at?
Uh, one oh four, I didn't, uh...
Oh, Forby? Yeah, I'm not gonna have a problem with that one. That area basically looks rural when you drive down there and look at it, and nobody even objected to it, so I don't even see any problems moving forward with it if somebody comes up with something tomorrow, so...
It's just, uh, further residential development, basically?
Yeah, they're wanting to put their equipment in a, uh, a, uh, build, a, a building, a little warehouse, wherever to put it in. Just some mobile homes up and down the road and...
This is one oh four?
If that's one of them.
Yeah.
No, this is the charter school.
Oh, the charter school, that's a whole nother story. Uh...
What, the one prior to it was just for further residential, it's for the residential?
We're gonna have to take a long look at this, uh, I know the neighbors are object, objecting to it, uh, you go by and look at it, it's a real narrow piece of property, uh, they're not gonna be, um, it's deep, I think it's the wrong location for the school to be honest with you, but I'll just reserve my thoughts about it and see what everyone has to say when it comes up.
I'm surprised the piece of property was, I mean, it's completely surrounded by the city anyway, why it never annexed?
Right, yeah, it's, um, you got a, a animal clinic next door to it, and the property sits pretty deep back in, but there's, to me, it's gonna be a traffic hazard coming in and out of there. If it was down to the corner, it would be different, but, um, I just think it's the wrong location for the school personally, so...
Instead of curiosity, you know, apparently the two lots to the, I'm gonna guess to the east of them, they didn't want to incorporate those, or what the...
Yeah, it's actually in the parish, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
I think those are different owners.
Yeah, but they didn't try to take that property or buy that property?
Bert Coons, uh, south or not too far from Walker, but, or from Dean, I should say.
Oh, I know where it is, okay, I'm picturing it.
Ron, has the zoning been approved for that yet, or is that another appeal that may be coming?
I think that's another appeal on the, on the zoning itself, so...
Okay, Dale?
Well, before you go, uh, Gene wants to come up and say something about it, he's up there holding his hand up, so...
Oh, okay.
Let's let him, I wanna hear what he's got to say, this is...
It's not actually a zoning change, that's a, a special, uh, exception use in that district, and that's in front of the ZBA, and that has been postponed until next month.
Okay, well, it makes it easy.
Thanks, Stephen.
And I guess, I mean, are, so is your intent to postpone this?
Yeah, that would be my intent to postpone it until after we hear what goes on, if the, to make a final ruling on it.
Public hearing.
I wouldn't mind anything so they can get there.
So, I mean, that's a good question, I mean, are we, over to y'all, how you're proposing it, but so if we've got an annexation hearing, we could just postpone that?
I don't know why not, I mean, couldn't we just?
That was my question, is...
Well, since the hearing is already set, it would seem like you would have the hearing and then just postpone the ordinance.
Okay, so let the people that need, already been advertised, come down, can come down and say what they need to say, and then we'll, we'll make a decision, and that would be what I would tend to do, would be postpone it until we get more, um, information from the MPCs.
Well, could I clarify, we are talking about the annexation, right?
Correct, yes.
So, this, really, the subject of the public hearing should be the annexation, not the zoning, but I mean, I guess you can control what people say.
An annexing the property may not be a bad thing.
Right.
Right.
Okay, Dale?
Well, let me just ask one little detail on that. Is the request for annexation coming from the school, or is that the other owner of the property that's trying to sell the property to the school? I mean, you got a lot of things moving on in this...
The school won't annex into, into the city. To my understanding, I could be wrong, but...
See where I'm going with this deal, 'cause it's a little bit like...
We'll, we'll see what the record shows.
The annexation request came from the current owner of the property, Trinity Height, uh, not Trinity Heights, Trinity Baptist Church.
I think that the, uh, school is, uh, they're, they're contingent on whether, whether it gets approved or not, whether they even want to purchase it. That, that's what I'm hearing, I could be wrong, but...
But it isn't Trinity Baptist that's pushing for the school to begin with?
Yeah.
Well, if they already own it, it probably doesn't, and they're not a taxable entity anyways, I guess, okay.
Thanks, Mal.
But the, but the charter school is a taxable entity?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah. And I calculated that...
Isn't it considered to be private?
Sir?
Isn't it concerned, isn't it, uh, uh, said to be private, the charter school?
I believe so, and it's a taxable entity, and I calculated the tax revenues to be just under sixty thousand dollars, the annual tax revenues.
I mean, that's, it's for profit, I guess.
Yeah, charter schools are alpha profit.
Yeah, Malcolm, it's one of the sources of...
A lot of the better affiliated with churches are not, so that's...
I think this is a private, the church is selling the land to someone who wants to put in a privately-run charter.
Thanks, Mal.
All right, Dale?
Again, these are matters on second reading, final passage, number one oh five. It's zoning appeal, C forty-four fourteen. It's an ordinance amending chapter one oh six of the Code of Ordinances, City of Shreveport, by rezoning property located on the north side of Piermont Road, one hundred fifty feet east of Line Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, changed from B one buffer business district to B two neighborhood business district, except for the thirty most easterly feet, which shall remain B one buffer business district.
Oh, well, that's a new area, but I believe we have some people down here that would like to make a comment on that.
I, I believe so, and I'd certainly like to give them the opportunity, if somebody else, if it was Havard that was gonna speak for the Neighborhood Association, or Cliff, or if somebody had anything they'd like to say beyond, uh, what was said during public comments, we'll certainly give you that opportunity at this point.
Please come up, give us your name and your address and... Dale, we used to ask for social security and now, but we'll leave that off today. All right.
Good afternoon, my name's Cliff LeBlanc, I am a resident of South Highlands Neighborhood Association. We've been working, um, through this issue for quite a long time. Initially, when we presented to the MPC the first time, all we were asking was that the MPC uphold the existing ordinances and, um, that, that would require the B one buffer area. We've tried working with Circle K to look at the orientation of the store to face Line Avenue so that it would minimize the impact on the residents of Piermont. Tomorrow, I'm, I'm sure you will see quite a few of the Piermont residents, if not all of them, in the seven-hundred block here, um, to voice their concerns of the impact that this development will have on their neighborhood. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, um, but again, all we're asking is that the, the ordinances that are on the books be upheld.
Any questions?
The zoning ordinances.
Any questions? Okay, if not, next.
Okay, I, I do have one question for Stephen Jean with regard to, I asked him to do a little research about diesel fuel and awning height and that, and if there is any change in zoning and/or use that was associated with the sale of diesel fuel in, quote, residential neighborhoods, and I don't know if he was able to find anything, or if there was anything to be found.
I haven't found anything that, that, that would limit in any way the sale of, of diesel fuel. Um, the only thing that we have in the books right now that deals with, and I think one of the concerns was whether or not you would have large commercial vehicles accessing this site. Of course, we have a use described in the ordinance that talks about truck stops. Um, one of the issues that you, obviously, when you look at practical, at the practicality of this site, the only eighteen-wheeler that appears to be able to access this site from a standpoint of, is the fueling, uh, you know, as we looked at our auto turn diagrams and so forth, you have a, you have a, a large truck that comes in, and actually, the tanker truck provides the fuel. Um, we haven't done any kind of, of analysis of large trucks, and I don't, I, I just can tell you, just by looking at it, that is very doubtful you'd be getting a lot of people wanting to access this site for fueling. Um, so, uh, at this time, I don't, I don't see anything that would specifically prohibit someone coming in and obtaining the fuel. I think there's a lot of practical issues to that when you're dealing with truck stops, they have very high-speed pumps, where these pumps are more geared towards selling fuel to, to, uh, consumers that are more in the, uh, uh, individual, uh, non-commercial vehicles, although you have some commercial vehicles that, that come to gas stations. So, there's more of a practical thing. I haven't found anything in the ordinance that would strictly prohibit that sale at this time. We're still looking at it, and if we find anything else, obviously, we'll, we'll, we'll speak to it tomorrow.
Okay, and just to give the rest of the council, an ancillary concern that isn't necessarily being addressed by either the zoning, rezoning, or the variance with, with regard to the hours of operation, is that this additional change is they're proposing to sell diesel fuel there. Now, diesel fuel in and of itself probably wasn't really the alarming feature, but it was the combination of adding diesel fuel and raising the awning height, another, I don't know if it's four to six feet, I don't remember the specifics, so there's certainly a concern that this opens up the idea that you could have truck trailers coming in with fueling there. And that, obviously, in a residential neighborhood causes some concerns, certainly in the hours, particularly if you were open at late hours and you had all those kind of, uh, hydraulic braking deal and the rest of it, that would, yes, significantly impact those that live nearby. So, that's why I'm kinda tracking down this particular issue, though, it isn't really here in front of us. Um, and then, I believe Jeff and I have been talking, um, about this, I'll call it median-slash-curb barrier that's being proposed. Now, prior to today, I was of the opinion that this median that I think is being proposed by Traffic Engineering, somebody's in here from, Robert?
Robert C.
Uh, maybe it's Robert's group, or if it's Traffic Engineering, I'm not sure whom, that there is gonna be some type of a, I'll call it a median, a cement median, that would prevent somebody from making a left-hand turn across Piermont into this, um, or going eastbound out of it, i.e. going across Piermont either direction, going in and out. And I was told today that the proposal is for just those yellow plastic stakes. Now, I hope that's not the case, but it, that's what's being proposed, I think we need to relook at that, certainly from, that's definitely gonna change the aesthetics of the area, if that's what's dividing that street, or being proposed to divide that street.
One of the things we looked at, Councilman, was quick curb, as well as the possibility of a median, uh, raised elevated median. It's easier to use the quick curb and the vertical panels. In some cases, in this particular situation, what we're trying to prevent is, of course, the left-turn movement from eastbound traffic into the site at the first driveway closest to the intersection. What that would create would be a stacking situation where vehicles behind any car trying to make a left turn there would stack across the intersection, and we're trying to prevent that action from happening.
Right, and then, very clear to me, though I may not have described it, the intent, I am concerned about what we are gonna put in there and who mandates that, who is the driver of that and who pays for it?
The developer would pay for the installation of that type of facility.
And then we mandate what we, what we would like installed, I mean...
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So, can we, can we tell them? I, I think, the issue is, they'd rather not see the vertical panels, but an actual hard-edged median. Can we dictate that to the developer?
The character of the roadway out there, you've got narrow lanes approximately ten and a half to eleven foot wide. Uh, to put a significantly wide median in there would severely restrict your lane width of the roadway going east and westbound there. It can be looked at, it would be, have to be an extremely narrow lane or curb median.
Okay, I'm, I, I hear what you're saying, so, but it's us that can drive that essentially, is what you're telling me.
That is correct.
But those lanes are not very wide, are they?
No, sir, that's what I was just saying, Kent, Mr. Chairman.
Robert, these are the panels like what we see on the west side of Seventieth, west side of Seventieth Street at Yurie.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Around the Kroger and Target development. Are there, are there any restrictions on Piermont either side of Line Avenue, or Line Avenue currently for trucks other than delivery trucks that are servicing those businesses?
I believe, and I would have to verify this with Traffic Engineering, but it's my understanding that, uh, Piermont going east from that intersection has no through-truck traffic permitted on that section of roadway. If they have a bill of lading somewhere within the roadway, they're entitled to use the road to get to that bill of lading, but no through-truck traffic is permitted.
But it may be on the west, on the west side?
On the west side is permitted, yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, we need to check with that, 'cause I will say at the neighborhood meeting two weeks ago, there was a discussion that there used to be a no-through-truck traffic sign posted there that is no longer there, and I believe it was Ms. Brule called somebody in Traffic Engineering, and she was told that it's, that it is authorized for truck traffic going eastbound beyond Line Avenue. So, if we could have somebody confirm that tomorrow for the thing, that, that it's counter what we were told last week.
We'll have that information, Traffic Engineering.
And I only ask, Councilman Jenkins, is there anything else in terms of the type median that you need to bring or talk about?
I mean, I, I don't know if we need, it sounds to me, based on what he said, is that we, that certainly doesn't seem that to be the reason to talk about whether we rezone or not, okay? I'm not gonna say that that's, I mean, that's a smaller issue.
They want to address that later in the process.
But, but, I mean, I can just tell you that unequivocally, I am not in support of those vertical panels in that particular location, because that clearly is changing the character of the street, the neighborhood, the residential traffic, everything, okay, too. But if that's for us to come to some kind of mind meld on that, I'm all for it. I don't want that to distract from the bigger issue.
Not critical for tomorrow.
But, but you see my point.
Uh, there's several site plans that I see online, but the first one says new raised, it says CONC, which I assume is an abbreviation for concrete, new raised concrete median barrier. So, when you adopt the ordinance changing the zoning, you're saying in accordance with the site plan submitted, so if that's the correct site plan that's on there, as being concrete, if that is your concern.
Okay, well, I mean, if that is indeed what it's saying, I thought we were just approving the site plan of the site, not necessarily the middle of the intersection of the road.
I think that's included on the site plan.
Oh, that's a part of it, isn't it?
To me, that's part of the ingress and egress, although I'm not sure we've answered that question before, but...
I mean, we've probably answered that, Lee, I mean, I just took the site plan to be, here's the properties in discussion, but these are two, what I call kind of, sort of ancillary to the bigger picture, both the diesel and this, but I wanted to, okay...
But if you adopt the site plan, they're gonna have a right to do whatever is there, so you, you need to make sure that whatever you want is...
I mean, concrete is definitely what's, what I wanted, I mean, albeit.
Then, then it's very important that, that the... Then, then it's very important that, that the staff go back and evaluate the impact of, because as Julie required, if that site plan requires a concrete barrier, we've got to evaluate putting a concrete barrier in there.
Yes, sir.
So, let's, let's look at that and make sure we can respond to that in event they need to do something differently.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You'll have that ready for tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I had another question, Robert. This was a, a note that I had seen and this may have already been addressed, I just want to ask. So, on the traffic considerations, I see here, and I don't know if you'll have an illustration you can show us or something, but this is a note saying the front and rear axles of the truck will have to jump the curb in order to enter the site as shown from Line Avenue when they take a right in, I think is how I, how I understand it, but, but then it says, turn will have to occur from inside across, inside lane across any traffic. And I'll, I'll send this to you, but it looks like it was a note between you and Michael. And do you know if those, those issues are addressed already?
The truck, the delivery truck delivering the fuel will be required to make a right turn out of the left lane of Line Avenue because of the turning restrictions that are in the parking lot. And certainly, sir, when they do make that right turn into the parking lot, the rear wheels of the, of the vehicle will cross over the curb area that's mostly on their parking lot, not so much on the public facility, but within their parking lot area. They were providing for some additional thick, heavy-duty paving and everything like that in that area to prevent any damage to the parking lot, allowing the trucks to make that little crossover on their lot. On the exit side on Piermont, there is an area where they crawl, will cross over the sidewalk because the limitation that we have on the width of sidewalk are driveway entrances that are permitted, but they are calling for additional thickness on the pavement of the sidewalk in that, and to put concrete in that area to prevent any damage to the sidewalk area or to the neutral ground of the roadway at that point.
So, there is some structural means of addressing those-
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right. Robert, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Chan?
Yes, sir.
I've gotten some phone calls about when the public would be allowed to speak and I've told them that the rules say that provide for the public to speak at the beginning of the meeting-
Right.
And not immediately before the resolution or the ordinance is going to be adopted. Of course, that can be suspended and there was some discussion about suspending the rules to allow all of the comments to come before the, the ordinance is going to be adopted and also to consider right after that, BAC 60-14. So, I'm just mentioning that now so that the council can decide whether or not they want to do that tomorrow.
I'll yield and get some instructions from the councilman who's in that district and I think that would be the best way, but I'm not as smart as he is, so I'll take my directions from him.
Well, you're plenty smart and naturally, I'd certainly yield to your wisdom, but yes, my intent would be once we move through the first few items and get the public comments, I propose we take whatever general public comments are those and then, once we start on public comments, to suspend the rules, take up all the public comments and this specific item and the other appeal further down all at once.
I'll, I'll look to get that from you and, and I know you, you, you older brother over there would be, well, no, your younger brother over there. I said older brother.
We're twins.
Oh, yeah, twins.
I said my more popular brother.
Yeah, there you go, your more popular brother. I know I'll be able to get a second from him.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May want to suggest as well for the council's consideration that you may want to bring this up and do it also prior to the budget briefing and that, obviously anticipate a good number of folks will be in attendance and there's no need in having those folks sit through that unnecessarily. They could certainly stay if they would decline to do so, but I would assume you all may want to address that, this matter, and get it out of the way before we get to that portion.
Are you doing budget comments during mayor's communications? Was that the proposal or when we got to it on the agenda?
The budget presentation would come during communications.
Yeah, when we asked early, I think the chairman, he wanted to do it up front.
I was hoping that, let them come earlier.
You're also inviting the mayoral candidates to come down as well, so, but I would assume that you may want to get this out of the way.
Before we get to all that stuff.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to have the mayoral candidate sitting up front.
They can all wear name tags.
Well, we can make sure that they, we might have to ask Sammy to move over a little bit so we can make sure that they-
I, I have the best seat in the house.
Yeah, there you go.
There's one that's already on the front row right there.
Yeah, we got one already on the front row. And, you know, because you, you know how it is when you're running for those positions, you want to always get as much as you can.
Sammy knows what the best camera angles are, Mr.-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we might have to ask Sammy.
I don't, I don't know if he's going to get it up, man.
Yeah, well.
You might have to take the lunch.
Yeah, well, we might not have to ask him then.
Uh, Mr. Chan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, how long is the budget review, overview going to be?
Well, I guess that would depend upon what questions and what have you.
10 minutes from our part. Okay. Yeah, let me, if it's just 10 minutes, let's get it out of the way and we can, we can also say, you know, we, we are about transparency and, and if any of them have any questions, they can write them down and, and we'll look at it later.
I, I don't have any problem in convenience in the mayoral candidates, I was just trying to be considerate of those folks who would be, but coming down to attend for, for this matter, so.
Okay.
But we'll follow y'all's lead.
Thank you.
Continue, Mr. Chairman.
We're just going over, Oliver, we're just, just a 10-minute one there for the budget and we'll get that out of the way because I'm, I'm figuring that we're probably looking at 35 or 40 minutes with the zoning.
Okay.
35, 40 minutes as well?
Well, that's an hour, eh? That's, that's an hour there, we're looking at probably an hour, so we get the, we get the budget out.
And, and that presupposes that there's no public comments being made on the budget presentation as well, I'm assuming, correct?
Probably not tomorrow, probably not tomorrow. They probably won't even know enough about it to even ask any, any, any questions, but I just wanted to make sure that the mayoral candidates got their first exposure at it and, and I'm, I'm sorry, you know what, I, I don't want to leave out any, any city council candidates, so if any of them come down, that'd be well and good, we can sit them right up on the front row. So, we'll do that.
Okay.
So, I can let the residents of Piermont, I'm Havard Scott, by the way, I can let the residents know that after the opening session and the mayoral and council candidates that you'll probably take up.
I would tell them to target 3:30 to be down here because I don't, do not think we'll be there anytime before 3:30 and-
Okay.
Shortly thereafter, when we get to that stage, we'll get started, but not, I'll contractually agree not to start before 3:30, just so that-
I appreciate that because several of them are elderly and I, I think that's very kind of how to do it.
And we don't want to keep them away from their homes too long. Because Oliver's, I say, Oliver, you've, you've been elected already, so.
I ain't been elected already.
Nobody decided, nobody decided to run against a good, Dale, you know how it is, nobody decided to run against a fighter power, you know?
Hard to beat an X Marine.
Right, he might drop a bomb on us, anything, all right.
I wish it was because of the strength of the candidate.
It was.
Anyway, let's go on.
Ordinance 106, Mr. Chairman.
I just didn't want to say that, you know, I got some other candidates up here, I don't want to step on anybody's toes because, you know, all of them are strong.
Exactly.
So, let's move on, I might need Jeff's vote on something. He might, he might not want to give it to me.
We're still on second reading of the final passage, ordinance 106, it's zoning matter C 6314, it's an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the southeast corner of Jordan and Line, Streetport Kettle Parish, Louisiana, from B to E neighborhood business extended use district by adding, limited to residential lodging facility with transitional housing on the third floor only.
I think we all for that, okay, move on.
Ordinance 107 is zoning matter C 7014, it's an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the west side of Forving Road, 270 feet south of Emily Street, Streetport Kettle Parish, Louisiana, from R 1 D E, urban one-family residence, extended use district, to R 1 D E, urban one-family residence, extended use district, limited to a contractor's office with inside storage only.
Okay, Ron will tell us about that tomorrow. Okay, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Mr. Chan, I'm not aware of any matters to be removed from the table.
Any council member have anything that they'd like to have removed from the table? If not, Property Standards Appeals, Wes Miss Farnell, there she is. I couldn't see you over there.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins, our first case is 360 East 68th Street, the owner is present.
Hey.
This is in Councilman Oliver Jenkins' area. Councilman Jenkins, if you recall, this was a house he has been demolishing, has done a very good job, there is the fireplace and some lumber. I've agreed to give him to January the 12th to completely finish the demolition of this.
Okay, I'll move.
I'll say.
Okay.
I'm happy to move unless you'd like to say anything. I'm okay with the proposal, so don't talk us out of it at this point.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, 70.
I'm sorry, what was the date? Thank you.
January 12th. Thank you.
Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. His time has been extended to what now?
January the 12th, sir.
First meeting, when?
January.
Mike.
Thank you. It was postponed, it was July 7th.
You did a good job, though.
Okay, next.
Our next case is 1447 Hollywood Avenue. Councilman Shine, this is in your area. The owner has rehabilitated the property, property, it's only present.
Is he here?
No. He's, no, he's rehabilitating the property, there is a care premise with it, we are citing that, but as far as the rehabilitation, he has done everything that Property Standards has requested and we would ask that this case be closed.
Okay, so moved by the chair, can I get a second? Second by Councilman Sam Jenkins, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. This case has officially been closed, thank you, Miss Farnell.
The next case is in Councilman Jenkins' area, it is 3640 Del Rio, owner's done a very good job on it, it has been rehabbed and we would ask that that case be closed.
So, moved, second? It's been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by Councilman Jeff Efferson. No questions, vote yea or nay? With a five vote, two out of the chamber, it has been officially closed.
The next case is Councilman Efferson's area, 1622 Crestwell, the owner had an emergency, Councilman Efferson and I had agreed to continue this for 30 days, that's going to be till November the 10th, I think it is.
It's been moved, second? By Mike, yea or nay, a five vote, I mean, five vote, two out of the chamber, it's been continued.
Mr. Chan?
I thought I-
Try it again.
Oh, I got it. I just didn't push hard enough.
Yeah.
You know how it is, you don't want to break anything that's public property because Mike might suggest for me to pay for it, you know, I don't have money.
Our next case is in Councilman Shine's area, Mr. Jane McReynolds.
Mr. Reynolds here.
That is Mr. McReynolds. Mr. McReynolds has done a great job on the house, he just needs to put siding on it and he's requesting 60 days, which will be December the 8th, and I have no objection.
Okay, if I can get a second on that.
Second?
Been moved, a second by, it's been moved by the chair, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins, but you want to say anything before we? All right, you got a nice smile on, got a nice smile, all right, good job. All right, that's been extended, it's a five, five vote, two out of the chamber.
Councilman Shine, our next case is 3413 Palm Road, it is in your area.
Mr. Herman, is Mr. Herman here?
Mr. Herman Pickens is here, the property is no longer a demolition candidate and we are requesting that the property be closed.
Second?
Mr. Herman says you took your time to come down, I'd hate for you to go back and not have anything to say, but it-
I have anything to say.
All right, then, been moved by-
Congrats, it looks a lot better.
Yeah, by Councilman Sam Jenkins, let's vote, please. Okay, it has been closed with a five vote and two out of the chamber. Okay.
Okay, the next case is in Councilwoman Rose McCullough's area, the owner is here, you see us, that is 2219 Hawkins Street.
Please come up.
Owner has done all of everything that Property Standards has requested her to do and we would ask that the case be closed.
Would you like to have a word or two to say?
Uh, no, nothing except for thank you for the extension.
That's what I was about to say, I thought you were going to say, I'm so glad to live in a great city.
You can have the motion.
It's been moved by Councilman Efferson, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins. If not, let's all vote, yea or nay, this property has been, what is it, closed?
All right.
Been closed. All right, thank you for coming down.
Our next case is in Councilwoman McCullough's area, 3038 Yorktown, the owners are present, Ms. Moore and her grandson. There, this is a demolition candidate, has not been rehabbed or remodeled, owners are presently trying to sell the property. They are stating that they should have the house sold by tomorrow or Wednesday. They are asking for 30 days and I am requesting for two weeks.
Jeff, what is your motion on that?
I think Councilman McCullough's district.
Now, this is in Ms. McCullough's area.
I think, uh, Mr. Sibley just went to go see if he can retrieve her from and back to Yonkin.
Okay, yeah.
The next 304, 106.
Yeah, I know.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm picking on Resolution 160.
That's okay.
Okay.
Ms. McCullough, this case, this is 3038 Yorktown, the owners are present, there is, the house, of course, still sits as it is and it is a demolition candidate, there may be a sale on the table according to the owners, they are believing that this house will be sold either tomorrow or Wednesday, they will be closing the deal. I'm requesting two weeks, they want 30 days, they are here if you wish to ask them any questions.
I just know, since they last appeared before the council, since you last appeared before the council, as far as I recollect, we agreed that you would get 30 days to seek demolition, that's what I recall. And, of course, as your representative, I was willing to assist you with that, but according to legals, I could not do that and I informed you in a very timely manner, less than seven days, that I could not assist you with that and I constantly reminded you that you had 30 days to demolish. And now, we come today, we're coming up with something else. I mean, the citizens are complaining about an eyesore. I don't have a problem with two weeks, but I definitely have a problem with 30 days. And I'm hearing now that you want, you're interested in purchasing the property, a possibility of putting a, a mobile home on the property, I mean, so many other ideas are surfacing- I mean, so many other ideas are surfacing at this time based versus what we actually agreed on at the very last meeting, and that was demolition. Getting the house demolished. So based on what, um, you're recommending, Ms. Farnell, I will move to give them two weeks.
Yes, you're gonna second that?
I have to demolish.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman McCullough, second by Councilman Efferson.
I'm curious to know if they're gonna sell it tomorrow? Is that what you're saying?
That's what they have told me, that they're going to sell it.
We don't have to start all over, do we?
No. The, the, and the reason why I stated, um, that I would give them the two weeks is because the person that is requesting to sell, uh, has spoken to me. She is in Afghanistan, I will say that. She plans to, as she told me, purchase it. They do have, they have, um, an attorney. There is a realtor involved, and based on those two things, as I told them, I would be willing to give them two weeks.
That sounds good.
Two weeks.
Well, the new owner knows all this.
The new owner has, has all the information. She knows that there is a demolition order, that that order does pass, conveys on to, uh, her. And she has stated that she will demolish it, but as I told her, um, she must acquire the property first. If it hasn't been acquired within that period of time, we will proceed with demolition as forestated.
Okay.
All right, let's vote. Oh, we got everybody's back now. Seven, seven oh B. Two weeks. Did you wanna say anything? I, I'd hate for you to come out here and sit and then get a chance to say anything.
Now, the sale is next week, right?
You say you give us two weeks?
Yes, ma'am. You have, you have two weeks.
Two weeks.
To, to sell it. So...
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
If, if requested, if possible, that we could be given some sort of document that I can give to the real estate, uh, real estate agent, that she can, uh, know that we did go to this meeting and we were given additional two weeks to close.
Uh, Mr. Thompson, could you?
Yeah, if you'll contact our office, we'll give him a...
They'll give you, they'll give you a couple of minutes. Contact Mr. Thompson's office. Do you have his phone number?
I do not, but I see his name on someone I can...
Let me, his number is six seven three. And this is, this, it would not be a charge on this, and he usually charges for this. Six seven three five two six two. 'Cause he's, he's a very, very conservative gentleman. I almost used the word tight, and the mayor says that he's actually tight sometimes, but I won't, I won't go that far. I'll be a little bit more lenient to him than the mayor. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am. Our next case is thirty-one forty-five Ashton Street. Mr. Kelvin Jacobs.
Mr. Jacobs here.
Mr. Jacob, I'm sorry. Mr. Jacob is not present. This structure poses a safety threat, and it needs to be demolished as soon as possible. I would ask that you would hold the Property Standards decision. I ask that you affirm it for demolition, please.
Rose, is that in your area?
That is in Councilwoman McCullough's area.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved, uh, by Councilwoman McCullough, second by Councilwoman Jeff Efferson, that we would uphold the decision of the Property Standards Board, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, wow, that is, that is some structure, isn't it?
Who's second in the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Jeff?
Thank you.
Seven oh vote, uh, to demolish. All right, Ms. Farnell?
Uh, yes, our last, no, I'm sorry. We have, um, twenty-nine seventy-five Willie Mays. It is an inoperable vehicle, uh, in Ms. McCullough's area, at twenty-nine seventy-five. The owner is present. We would ask that that case be closed because the owner is in compliance. It's a blue Lincoln Town Car, and it is operable.
Well, let me, Reverend, would you come up, please?
You said it is operable, right?
Yes, uh, that one is on twenty-nine seventy-five. Yes, ma'am.
The one that we're looking at pictures of is operable?
Yes, sir. The blue Town, the bling, blue Lincoln Town Car is.
Reverend, we wanna give you a chance to, yeah, a word or two.
Yeah, I wanna thank the council for giving me the extension on that car, and I was able to get it cranked and started. Someone had stole it, so I appreciate that.
Is it someone that stolen it already?
No, they had stole the car. The reason why it was inoperable.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I'm gonna fix it all the way on back up. I'll make it look brand new when I get to it.
Okay. 'Cause Reverend, you're good at doing that.
Yeah, I can do that.
You've been doing that now for quite some time.
Yes, sir.
I remember when you used to be out in my area, and I hated to see you move, 'cause you were doing such good work.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, it has been moved by Councilwoman McCullough, second by Councilman Efferson on my right. Maybe not, well, okay. Okay, and second by the chair. Second by the chair. That, uh, uh, this would be, um, terminated, I guess, yeah.
Closed.
Closed, yeah.
Dorothy, in, in our book, there are pictures with today's date of other vehicles that are sitting in the yard that I would guess aren't inoperable? And are those gonna...
Yes, sir.
Are those gonna come before us later, or...
Um, we, I do have another one.
Oh, okay.
I have another one. I have...
Let me answer these questions on that, too. Those are not demopable. Those are whatever you're seeing.
Yeah, let's, let's hear the case. Sorry about that.
Um, the next case is an alquable vehicle at twenty-nine sixty-five Willie Mays Street.
Sixty-five or seventy-five?
No, sixty-five.
It says twenty-nine seventy.
I have two, there are two there. You should have one that we just did, and then if you would look at the red tag, there is another one right behind that one.
I have seventy-five.
You have twenty-nine sixty-five. The first one is twenty-nine seventy-five, and then right where the tab is, there's another one that says twenty-nine sixty-five, is directly behind that one.
Ms. Farnell, would you give me the case number?
The case number is C A B fourteen zero zero four four nine. That is located at twenty-nine sixty-five.
The case that I have is C A B one four zero zero four four five.
Yeah, that's the one you just did. That's the one you just did.
Yes.
Oh, I see. Uh, one letter that says twenty-nine sixty-five.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, what is the pleasure?
Okay, uh, the property...
It's not listed on the agenda, though.
Well, it's on, I put it on mine.
Not the twenty-nine sixty-five, the twenty-nine seventy-five is here.
Yeah.
I'm guessing if the, the owner is here, it just didn't make it on to the agenda, and you're prepared, and he's prepared to talk about it?
Yes, and this is one that was added from the last, uh, council meeting.
Technically, you should add it to the agenda if you're gonna...
Okay, if you need a motion, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Yeah.
Look at this. Yeah, this is what's on here. You just need to...
Call the number again for the purpose of the motion, Dorothy.
Well, you gotta ask if somebody's got some for or against adding it to the agenda.
The number for this case is C A B fourteen zero zero four four nine at twenty-nine sixty-five Willie Mays Street.
Dale, it's just been brought to my attention that, uh, I do have to ask, uh, you know, you always have smart people on the council. So do we have anybody who would like to speak in opposition of adding this, uh, case to the agenda? If not, uh, I'll make the motion. It's been moved by the chair. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, second, thank you. Thank you, sir. That we would add this to the agenda. Okay, it's been added with a seven oh vote.
Ms. McCullough, thank you.
All right, now...
Yes, sir. This case is in Councilwoman McCullough, the owner of the property. The vehicle is Mr. Nathaniel Francis. This is an inoperable vehicle. It is a white Taurus. The vehicle is ready to be towed, and the owner is present.
Okay, uh, Reverend Francis, please.
Additionally, this vehicle was cited March the sixth of twenty-fourteen. So we're asking that the property, that the vehicle be towed.
Is it a picture of an automobile here? 'Cause I don't see it.
It's behind.
Shut the very back.
There should be like a second time.
Dale, if you wanna call for your, for your high school senior, you might be able to get a price. Visually.
Okay, now, this is inoperable, right? Okay, Mr. Francis.
All right, you see that? I'm about to, I'm about to sell a car. And Dale, if he needed one for his high school senior, don't let him have a high school senior. Oh, okay.
Okay, Mr. Francis, you, you give your name and, and state your name.
Okay, this is Nathaniel Francis, and I'm just needing two weeks on this car. Started working on it. I haven't got it the way I want it. Like I said, I didn't, when I was here the last time, I, I didn't know that I was cited for that particular car. But here's, here's proof that I've, I purchased this key, so I need to get someone to look at it for me just to get it started, 'cause it's been sitting a while. So I need two weeks, and I'll have that done, or else I would have it towed away.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, if you give me two weeks, just like I did with the Lincoln, that car got five thousand miles on just five thousand.
Wow.
And I'd like to fix it up for the highway.
I'm gonna give him two weeks.
Okay, it's been moved, been seconded by the chair. Uh, been seconded by Councilman Webb, that we would give him two weeks. All right, Reverend?
And I, I'd like to say one other thing, if you're on my...
Okay.
Something just happened, uh, and I know, Rose, I'd be calling her, but this lady, I was here the last time, and I hate to see her house demolished. Now, I just sold the house, and I didn't ha, I had her number, but I lost it. And I was trying to call Rose, because Rose had told her she knew someone that could demolish for her to help her, and that Rose hadn't called me back. But I was called, that's one of the reasons I was calling you, Rose.
I couldn't, I couldn't assist her with that.
Okay, but, uh, what I'm saying now, if, if someone can come there and fix that house instead of demolishing it, and, you know, that, that, I got the lady card, she got money, would that be possible to get an extension on that? That's what I wanna know.
Talk to, uh, the lady right next to you there.
Lady in red.
See what she says.
We, we need to talk now, we can talk later.
The lady in red.
Talk to, talk to Darcey and see what she's gonna recommend on that particular case.
And then...
Those are all the cases that I have today.
If I could make a motion to add, uh, one more appeal, um, this is, uh, for the appeal of, um, PSG one three oh oh eight seven eight.
Second.
Second, third.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman, Efferson, second by Councilman Ron Webb. Michael Carvin, he got it. All right.
Seven. All right.
Okay.
So, this is an appeal, uh, Dorothy, if you want me to bring this to you, so you have a reference point, or do you have it?
Well, I, I have it with me, yes. I did bring the case. Case is nineteen oh six Hickory. PSG one three zero zero eight seven eight. Nineteen oh six Hickory.
Yes, we need to see if there's anybody that wants to speak for or against adding it.
Okay, uh, that's right, you wanted to add it to the agenda. Okay, anyone that would like to speak in favor or against adding this to the agenda? If not, I'll accept the motion at this time to add it. We'll...
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Jeff Efferson, second by Councilwoman McCullough, that we could add this to the agenda. All in favor, yes, opposed, is no? Seven oh vote has been added.
This is, um, a care premise that is coming before you for a bill dispute. The property was cited December the eleventh of twenty thirteen. It was a vacant lot. Uh, the owner, Ms. Lois Bryant Hughes. We did send notification, and the property was clean. The charge was two hundred dollars for the cleaning of the property plus a hundred and fifty dollars. Ms. Hughes stated that, um, she had cleaned the property and that, um, everything was still on the street. The issue with this is this property was a vacant lot. She says she called Public Works. The issue is this. Public Works does not abate or pick up from a vacant lot. Property Standards does. Property Standards will clean the vacant lots. Only when it's in front of a house does Public Works, of course, pick things up. So the, the trash debris was all piled in front of a vacant lot. We sent a notice. It was not abated, and we picked it up and billed, Ms. Hughes. We did have the correct address. I checked all of that. Uh, it was, the notice was signed for, and, um, therefore, since it wasn't completed, we picked it up and billed.
Well, and what the resident is saying is that, um, when, so the person who owns this lot, um, received the first notice about there being, um, you know, a care premise on the lot, hired a contractor to go out there and clear the, you know, get the lot cleaned up. They did so, and then they left, um, the, the waste at the curb, um, and this was before our bulk pickup, uh, and they were of the understanding that that was gonna be picked up by, uh, Public Works. They called Public Works to, you know, alert the need for a pickup. And so they're saying that they, um, you know, felt that they abated the violation and put it out, um, in a way that they would've thought would be picked up. And so they're asking that this, uh, charge be reversed.
Second?
And that's what I'd like to move.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Efferson, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins, that the fee would be reversed. All in favor, vote yes, opposed, is no?
Ms. McCullough, please.
Huh? With a seven oh vote, this has been reversed. Okay. Do you have any more?
I do not, sir.
If not, I, I don't usually do this, but at this point, uh, I think, Ms. Rogers? Is Ms. Rogers back there?
Yeah, she's back there.
Okay. I'm not calling you to speak, but I'm just calling you to recognize, I believe you brought a young lady in with you, who is a, whose dad was a celebrity in the city across the river there, and, and Boja, the late, uh, Mr. Jack Strong and Catherine. I believe your mother was named Catherine. 'Cause you belong to both of them, uh, you know. You know, Jack was a guy, but, you know, you belong to mama, too, and it's just good to have you. You're from California? From Los Angeles. Uh, are you moving back, or you just here for a few days? It's just so good to have you, and, and our mayor does a lot of traveling over here, so if he comes to Los Angeles, he might want a good steak and lobster dinner. Now, you know, he's kinda high maintenance now. He's kinda, he's not like Dale and I, we could eat a hamburger, but, you know, the mayor likes steaks and lobsters, so it's just good to have you. And, uh, uh, your dad and mom were one of our wonderful citizens, uh, back in this area. I, I met your dad a long time ago. I don't wanna say when, 'cause Ron might think I'm trying to tell my age, but, uh, he's a fine gentleman here. So good to have you.
That's a great sorority, though. She's a member of...
Huh?
One of the finest sororities, uh, in the United States of America, if not in the entire world.
Well, Sam's wife...
He's been to ask if you were in it.
Yeah, Sam, Sam's wife must belong to it, yes, Rose.
That's my sister's sorority. I'm a Sigma.
Oh, okay, okay, well, that's why he's doing all that.
You all were about to leave. Were you all about to leave? Were you all about to leave?
Yeah, we'll bring up, we'll, we'll, we'll give them a chance to talk.
I want the rest of them to give you an update on the identification of the minor arterias for MLK. So you'll have a chance to inquire about that before you leave. I was going to give, give you an update.
There's no, there's no public comment.
Yeah.
Does anybody have a public works today? Rose, does it have a public works?
No, sir. As a matter of fact, Mike and his team were so concerned about the weather, they're out, so I'll take any notes for them and get back with you tomorrow. Great.
Okay, let's move to, uh, the taxi appeals.
Just so we're clear, we do have BAC 6014, but I'll give anybody a chance, since they're still in here, if they would like to make any comments about that. But as I mentioned earlier, I do plan to take this one up with the other Circle K issue.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, is it anybody? Is it anybody?
I'm Helen Wood. I live at 943 Southfield Road, and I have just objection to the hours of operation. Just want to make sure that we, whatever happens, that we take the opportunity to reduce those hours somehow. I live, it's a block or half a block to the west of the location, and I know it's been working, operating 24 hours for awhile, and we've had problems with that, and just would like to take this opportunity to restrict hours. Thank you.
I will take our lead from you on.
Think once again, it'll be taken up tomorrow with.
Right.
With the broader questions, absolutely.
Okay, uh, I believe, uh, specifically, we were, we were rid of our taxi appeal. I pray that Mr. Rico Burks. Okay. Come forward, sir, and.
Good evening, counsel.
How you doing?
Good, thank you. Uh, my name is Fred Rico Burks. Uh, I'm a resident of 541 West 76th Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. If you all don't mind, well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for taking time to consider my, uh, case or my situation, and, uh, I have a couple of letters of recommendation. One from my wife, one from the company that I work for, whom I'm applying for the drive for hire permit for, is VIP Taxi, but we're also Grand Slam Autos and Platinum Limos. And if I obtain this permit, I'll be able to work for all three facets of the company. So it meant a lot to me.
So you had a reference from your wife?
Yes.
Better be good.
Yes.
Uh, do it. We have anybody here from the police department?
Right there.
I was looking for your uniform.
Please, undercover.
Oh, okay, then, well, that's.
Retired undercover.
Yeah, that's a good way to dress then, okay?
Good afternoon, Guy DeMurray, Shreveport Police Vehicle for Hire. Mr. Burks did in fact come in and apply for a permit on the 17th of September. During the course of the background check, it was determined that he was currently, uh, in a court action. He has a court appearance on the 28th of October, and because of the nature of the, the charge, uh, which is relative to Section 102, Chapter 102, Section 62, uh, that he is.
What is the charge?
It's a narcotics charge.
Okay.
Uh, he is currently, uh, has court action, and, and as a result of that, uh, he was denied pending that court action.
Okay, uh, Mr. Burks, you want us to tell us why we shouldn't wait until your legal problem has been handled?
Yes, sir, I'd be more than happy to. The situation with the criminal charges that are against me, I do believe that I have a favorable outcome in that situation. As of right now, um, I've, I've accomplished several things to get me to this level to where I need the taxi permit to further achieve my goals. It's not only about providing financial stability for my family, which I have three boys and three girls. And right now, my income after child support is $12,000 a year, which is fairly low below the poverty rate. And with this, uh, permit, it will open, uh, doors for me that will probably exceed my current income by 150%. And that would allow me to set up a financial structure in my household, provide for my children, as well as open doors for me to start looking into things like community development. That's something I want to get into, which is a long-term goal, but as I accomplish these short-term goals, I feel like, uh, the sooner that I accomplish these goals, like getting this permit, obtaining this permit, which will open the door for me to, uh, meet new people, and also I'll be dealing with people, uh, who come in from out of town, um, I'm sorry. Uh, visitors to the city of Shreveport. I'll be dealing with a lot of visitors, because we also have Platinum Limo, so we'll be dealing with a lot of established people in the community who probably be spending a lot of money in the city of Shreveport. And I'd like an opportunity to deal with them and open up doors, not only for me, but for, uh, the company I work for as well, business-wise.
Well, let me ask you this. Now, if you don't get a favorable ruling from the judge on your criminal charges, uh, Mr. Sibley might have to come visit you. How about, how about that? You know, I, I, and I, I like your plan, but you know, you gotta, you gotta get across this first little, I'm gonna call it a little bonk in the road.
Understood. I do understand it. Uh, this isn't the only thing that I'm trying to accomplish. I have a, well, uh, since, I, I dealt with this situation in January of 2014. Since this situation, I was incarcerated for 50 something odd days. Since that 50 something odd day, I've acquired a commercial license. I've acquired my sales license for State of Louisiana, so I can sell cars. Uh, this is just one of many different goals that I have, to try to reestablish myself as a trustworthy citizen, and try to help with my character as far as, uh, in the realm of business. I know that it doesn't look good, the charges that I have, with the charges that I have pending against me as far as when you're dealing with the public, but this is something that's behind me, and it's something that's.
Well, let me, let me, let me ask you this. If it's, if, if he's got to go to court on the 28th, I mean, I don't see where it's behind him.
No, sir.
28th is not the 20, the 28th of October?
Yes, sir.
I believe that's a little bit in front of us. Going on.
And additionally, Mr. Shine, uh, Council, Chairman Shine, is that if he is convicted, his permit would be suspended immediately.
Right.
And he would not be able to reapply for a year. This is a misdemeanor charge, but he would be suspended pending, uh, the completion of the years, uh, passing after that sentencing. So we would possibly be backing, excuse me, in front of y'all, you know?
Right, well, I was, I mean, does he understand it? Does he understand that if he doesn't get a favorable ruling on that misdemeanor charge that, uh, even if we gave him a permit, it would be suspended?
Yes, sir, it's not been explained to him yet. He just, he was told that he could, uh, file for a hearing with, uh, the council.
That's right.
And then, uh, but the ordinance is specific about the timeframe following the conviction.
Mr. Burks, did you understand that?
Yes, sir. Counsel, uh, counsel, I, I have, uh, looked into the, uh, overall matter, and I do understand that if I'm convicted, that I will not be, uh, able to continue with my permit, but this corporate, and when I was saying that it's behind me, I was talking about the lifestyle, not the actual case. But, uh, if I had the opportunity to go ahead and obtain my license, it, it's probably going to be at least another six, may, six months, maybe even longer before the, I, I go for a status conference on the 28th of this month. Right now, since, uh, my application, it's somewhere around, uh, $4,500 is about the amount of money or income that I haven't been able to produce or bring home because of lack of this permit.
But I appreciate that, but I just wish you had thought about that.
Yes, sir.
Before you did the.
I totally understand.
Other little, uh, I'm gonna call it a little chicken around. Now, I'm gonna open this up and see if any other council members have anything to say. Councilman Carvin?
If, if the council decides to uphold the police department, he has a status conference coming up the 28th, which I guess at some point there will be a court date set in the future. If, at whatever point in the future he's cleared on this case, what would be the waiting period before he can come back and reapply?
The ordinance specifies on a misdemeanor that it's one year following, on the first conviction, following the, uh, completion of the sentencing, which would be any probation from that date is one year.
What if he's not convicted, though?
If he's not convicted, if it's dismissed, then he's eligible immediately.
And does he have to, is there a fee to apply?
Under these circumstances, there would not be, since this denial was based on his application, he would, that we would go ahead and approve him immediately upon proof of the dismissal.
Mr. Burks, how about if we would wait until after the 28th? So we wouldn't necessarily deny you at this point?
Yes, sir.
And because if we deny you, then that means you have to wait a year. But if we postponed it to, when is it? When, when, when do, when do, when do we meet again?
4/7.
We meet again when?
4/7.
The master, that's a status.
Yeah, that's.
See, that didn't necessarily. He said that's a status conference, and that will not be a court date.
But that's a, that's a status conference?
Yes, sir, it is.
When will a court date be?
I'm assuming probably at the beginning of the year, next year.
They usually set a court date at a status conference.
Yeah, I was just wondering. Do you have an attorney?
I have, uh, court-appointed attorney.
Okay.
So it'll be after January or January before he has a?
Possibly.
So the fact, the fact that he's charged is enough to deny the application. I'm not having a conviction.
I know the ordinance, yes, sir. If there's pending action, then it's authorized by the ordinance.
Maybe if we would postpone it. I mean, what, what is, you know, what is the place of counsel?
I think, I think in his interest, if he believes whenever this is heard by the court that he's going to be cleared, it's in his best interest that we uphold the police department's recommendation today, let the courts play out, and if he's cleared, he can come back and reapply and go to work and put his new life plan of action into motion.
Exactly.
But if we give him his license, then he loses it.
Right, he's not the way.
Then he's got further problems.
Right, he's not the way.
But he gets to make money, too, in the process, huh? Until he, until he's taken away.
Yes, sir, understood.
So I'm going to make the motion that we uphold the police department in this case.
I'll second your motion. You, you, you are employed. Now, you're just trying to.
Yes, sir. Uh, before this job, I was, I was working three different jobs, which kept me from spending a lot of time with my family. I worked 48 days straight, seven days a week, uh, working three different, uh, jobs with three different companies. Now, I'm with one company with, with, whom with I sell cars, but if I obtain this, uh, permit, I'll be able to drive limos as well as taxis.
I see, you, you're employed right now.
Yes, sir, I am employed by that company.
But you can't drive limos and taxis.
And taxis, which would be.
For that company.
Right, which would be the bulk amount of my income if I was able to do that.
You're not going to lose, you're not going to lose your job based on this decision?
Oh, no, sir, the company loves me. I'm 110% behind them, and as a matter of fact, uh, not only, uh, will it open doors for me to drive, it'll also, this permit will also solidify our leadership position in this company, because I will, uh, I will be working with all three aspects.
Hold on a minute, I don't, I don't want to.
But do you understand?
I don't want to get confused, I'm just, I'm saying.
Yeah, right.
You have a job right now. This vote today is not going to make you lose the job that you have, presently have, is that right?
No, sir, I don't think that it would.
Okay, all right.
Would it, would, would it determine if you got an increase in pay?
Of course, drastically.
But now, do you understand what the motion was?
To postpone?
No, no. Tell them again, Mike, give them the motion.
My motion is to uphold the denial until there is a final outcome in your court case. And if you are cleared as you anticipate, then you come back and you get.
Well, then I think Guy can do it without even bringing it back to us.
Yeah, then it never comes to us, you just.
Yeah, once I have proof of the completion of the case and dismissal, then we can issue him his permit immediately.
And I think that serves in your best interest.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Do we all understand? Rose, do you understand?
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, I have sons, you know, I have three, so I'm thinking about the fact that he could be earning extra money until he's actually convicted. And if he's convicted, then, you know, all of that's taken away. I mean, I'd rather see one of my three sons earning money and taking care of his family versus, you know, um, you know. I mean, that's, 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 that's how I was looking at it.
It sound, it sound like it's going to be a misdemeanor.
It is a misdemeanor. It is a misdemeanor.
Is there a reason as to why you don't state publicly what the charge is? Is that not allowed?
No, sir, I can, I can state. It's, he was charged with, uh, simple possession and possession of drug paraphernalia.
But, but he was incarcerated for that? What was the part of the incarceration?
Probably Caddo.
Uh, it was, I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's all.
It was in Bossier Parish, uh, pending a, a bond reduction, which was, uh, there was an old warrant that I had from a long time ago, and that's what, uh, started everything, uh, the whole process. I was stopped and because of the warrant, and I had the paraphernalia with residue inside, which gave me the charge of possession.
So you had an outstanding warrant from five, 10 years ago, something like that?
Yes.
And then you got, and you got pulled over, and then you had, um, some kind of paraphernalia with a little bit of residue?
Yes, sir.
And you ended up having to spend how long?
Uh.
50 days?
It was 56 days.
Now, that was for the warrant, though, wasn't it?
Well, it was the court process. Uh, they scheduled for me, uh, a bond reduction. It took almost 60 days for me to get into court.
And so was that?
What was the war for back then?
Yeah, was that because of the warrant, or?
Yes, well, really, what it was, what I, what, what I was told was that just the process in Bossier Parish, you have up to 60 days before you get, uh, after your status conference, within the first, uh, 72 hours, I believe it is, uh, you have up to 60 days before you can return to court, uh, before the process goes through to where you return to court. And that's how I ended up spending so much time, because I, I didn't have the money to make the bond. They set me at a, uh, which really, uh, from what I, from me dealing with the DA, from what I told, uh, what I was told, me and my wife, we've been together, well, we just were recently married, March of this year. We've been together for 15 years. Uh, we had an argument that resulted in her going to the hospital, uh, a physical exchange. She went to the, uh, hospital, a warrant was issued for my arrest, we were separated. Uh, when they picked me up.
Is she here today?
Yes, sir, she is. She's right here.
Oh, okay.
When they.
I thought maybe she might have been your lawyer.
She's everything. But when I was picked up, they charged me with a second-degree aggravated battery and put me in the maximum facility based upon, uh, that situation. That's how my charge was dealt out to me. And now, um, I just, I, I didn't know how to handle that. I've never faced anything like that in my life.
Sam, you got it, Sam.
Do you have another job? You work a different job somewhere?
I was working three until I got with this company, and I saw how I could take those three different jobs and work them all under one umbrella, and which.
All three of them are taxi, cab drivers?
Uh, taxi, uh, VIP taxi, which is also owned by the same owner of Grand Slams, Grand Slam Auto, which I'm currently, uh, employed with, Grand Slam Auto, as a salesman. Just recently got my sales license, sir.
What do you do for them?
Uh, I sell cars, I detail cars, I help out in the maintenance lot, uh, just.
You do have other means of making income?
Yes, sir, it's an hourly job.
Okay. At the same company?
At the same company, where, which I, I have a garnishment, uh, for, from my previous marriage, for, uh, for children's child support.
What happened, what happened to the battery charge?
Uh, we have an Alpha David in process, and that should be dropped.
So that's, you have that pending as well?
Right, it's, it's going to court with.
As well as the marijuana, or whatever they drug with.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burks, uh, I'm gonna take a chance on you. You seem to. You seem to be an intelligent person.
Thank you.
We all make mistakes.
Yes, sir.
I hope you learn from this.
Yes, sir.
Because like Mike said, you know, there are consequences with everything you do, whether you drink too much water or.
Yes, sir.
Uh, whether you eat too much.
Yes, sir.
I saw Mr. Thompson the other day eating too much and his stomach was hurting.
Yes, sir.
You know, there's consequences with everything that you do.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm gonna take a chance on you and, and I don't know how many people that's gonna vote with Councilman McCullough and myself.
Are you offering a substitute motion or?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna offer a substitute motion. That we would give you your, uh, permit. Because it's understood that if you, if you're convicted of this misdemeanor, that you will lose it.
Yes, sir.
And that if you're not convicted of it, you will have it now. Rose has a couple of boys and, and, uh, may I have a couple of daughters? And Rose got three. And you got to, you have to understand, you don't, you don't ever put your hands on a woman.
Yes, sir.
Unless you're helping up the steps or helping her through a door, or something like that. Domestic abuse is just something and, uh, that's not tolerated. And I guess you've been seeing it in the news, one old boy gonna mess around and lose maybe bunch of million dollars. Dale, and see if he'd had a good attorney like you, he might, you know, might not lose it. And, uh, so I'm just, I'm saying that to you that I, I hope, uh, and it seems like you have a a very sweet wife, that's right.
We have two together, but I had three from a previous marriage and one before, when I was eighteen years old. We currently have custody of my eighteen-year-old and we, but we're paying back pay for my eighteen-year-old in child support. But she accepts all six of my children, we raise them as one unit, and it's just an awesome thing, it's a beautiful thing.
Well, it's, it's awesome for her to say that, I'm gonna drop this now. To me, that's more awesome.
It is.
Yeah, to me, that's more awesome than, than anything else.
Yes, sir.
You know, I can say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a shot and, and, and the substitute motion is that we would give you your license. At this point, I'm gonna ask for a vote and let's see where we stand on the council.
Yes, sir, thank you so much, council, I greatly appreciate it.
Okay. We, uh, we stand for for to give you your license and you see, it's, it's a very slim vote in there, so you gotta make sure you do what you need to do, 'cause Jackie over there is gonna have the address of your wife and she's gonna call your wife from time to time to see how you doing.
I'd be more than happy to give a phone number to you.
Yeah, if you're not, if you're not living up to it, uh, Jackie's gonna let us know and we may have to send you to come back.
Yes, sir, I understand.
You know, and we not gonna, we might not be that good next time.
Yes, sir.
All right.
You know, the mayor just spoke against domestic abuse this weekend on the steps down there.
I'm sorry that, I missed it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a no-no.
And this council just voted
Right.
to give him a good old boy pat on the back with an outstanding warrant for domestic abuse. I find that a bit ironic.
Right, well, this is, this is not a pat on the back, now the only reason I'm doing this is because your wife's sitting right there now. And she wasn't sitting there.
She wrote a letter for him.
Yeah, now if she wasn't, if she, if she wasn't sitting there, and this is not gonna be like, uh, man, who's the, the football player?
Ryan.
Ray Rice.
Ray Rice?
Yeah, Ray Rice.
Yes, sir.
You know, his, his wife, his girlfriend went on to marry him because, uh, we doing this now and, and I can say that. And I, I don't want you to, I don't want you to take this as that we agree with domestic abuse.
Oh, no, sir, not at all.
Because we don't.
I don't either.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, you have any instructions for him?
Uh, no, the police department was here. They hear the ruling.
And, uh, Dale, one day when I need a taxi, I might just call him and just see how he's operating.
Taxi or limo, anybody on this council, free of charge on me? I can't.
I said we can do that.
No, no, what I'm saying is, I have favor with the company. I, I generate business for the company. Oh, okay, yes, sir, I apologize. I, I can't pay you enough, I can't thank you enough.
That's what you could do, is back away from that microphone.
Yeah, yeah. Now, you might be able to do that for Sharico over there, if she have a flat.
Mr. Chairman, before, before we go, 'cause I, I, I do wanna make at least a comment here very briefly, and, and I want you all to know that I, I join you in your abhorrence for domestic violence. And I certainly will be following up to ensure that that particular situation is effectively addressed and resolved. Obviously, if it was something that resulted in you spending fifty-plus days incarcerated in the Boja jail, I, I do believe that in most instances, most instances of domestic violence that end up with some form of jail time, you have probably exceeded the time that most of those individuals end up serving. And so if you did do it, then you have at least gotten some portion of your punishment. If you did not do it, then the fact that you have managed to find yourself inside of a penal facility for almost two months for a misdemeanor possession charge is also indicative of a problem in our city, in our society.
That's right.
That is just as offensive as domestic violence, and that is the legions of young people. Young men who look like you in particular, who find themselves caught up in the criminal justice system. Um, despite the fact that they have a level of usage, both in terms of consuming as well as distribution, that does not exceed any other similar demographic within our society. You find yourself unquestionably usually the one who is eighty-plus percent of the time being apprehended, put in jail, and finding yourself there, as you just expressed, for fifty-plus days. So, um, this is a situation where there's a scale that works here. You may have gotten away on one end, but there's no doubt you paid for it on the other. And as the good book says, I pray that you will go and send no more.
And the theme is, don't silence, you hear me sweetheart? Do not silence domestic violence. You got that? Okay.
All right, uh, Mayor, if I didn't, if I didn't know no better, you kinda sound like Clarence.
I listened until good notes, Mr.
Yeah, go, go forth and hear and say no more. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, darling.
All right, uh, next?
Remember what I said? Don't silence.
Next?
Those are all of them.
Those are, those are, those are all we have, Mr. Thompson, okay, Councilman Oliver Jenkins is there?
Two quick things.
Okay.
First is the swearing-in date, has that been resolved?
It's the twenty-seventh of December.
I think, I think it's twenty-sixth, 'cause the twenty-seventh is on a Saturday, we intend it's that Friday, the twenty-sixth.
Okay, so that, so it hadn't been resolved because we're still at this deal of where one part's thinking one day and another part's thinking another day.
Ms. Scott? Twenty-six?
Twenty-six?
That's what we've gotten from the city attorney, was December twenty-sixth.
No, twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, I thought it was.
So, okay, so in response, is, it has not been resolved, clearly.
If it's driven by the election date, then it would probably end up being the twenty-seventh. If it's not driven by the election date, then it would be the twenty-seventh.
And I'm not trying to be a smart aleck about it, I just think that we need to get everybody on the same page on this issue. And I'm not saying this needs to be done here at this moment, I'm just saying, can we put it on somebody's to-do list so that we can get past it?
We did, I know it was a dispute, we thought it was the twenty-seventh, that's what they.
Well, in, in, in meeting with Councilman Oliver Jenkins, uh, about a couple of weeks ago, he and I sat there and, uh, I mentioned the twenty-sixth, he mentioned the twenty-seventh, and I, I said, well, I guess we're operating under two different sets of assumptions and we will, we'll seek to find it out. We'll, we'll have the attorneys get together and, and make a determination.
One, one other thing, I, I called a convention center today to reserve the twenty-seventh. So if it's not the twenty-seventh, we need to, we need to do something with that.
The twenty-seventh is the same.
Well, I do know one thing, uh, Ron and I will not be concerned about.
Yeah, you got your last meeting.
Let me see.
No, no, no.
No.
We'll meet on a regular date, which will be the Tuesday.
Right.
And, uh, because, you know, before, it would always fall on the second council meeting in November. And that's why we had it, where we'd have the council to meet in the morning, the swearing-in at, at ten o'clock or ten-thirty or something, and then the new council would meet on the first time at twelve.
Right.
And then they would meet again at three, to organize the council at twelve and three to take up whatever was on the agenda. But all of the agenda items will be taken up that Tuesday. So I think the only meeting will be at twelve to organize the council on the date that the oath of office is given.
The Independence Bowl kickoff is at two o'clock, so y'all need to have it all wrapped up by then.
The two o'clock, the twenty-seven.
Let's get it somewhere else. Let's get down, let's get down to something.
We'll be giving priorities in order. LSU only wins one more game there, prime candidate for that Independence Bowl, sir.
All they gonna win is one more.
That's it.
No, don't y'all say that, LSU gonna do better than that. Uh, and Mayor, I, I would hope that they. Mayor, I, I would hope that they would give you, uh, and I guess we should have said that while, uh, I would hope that they would give you the tickets to buy two of these guys. So you, so you could get them out before, before you go out of office.
We'll hand them out at the tailgate, Mr. Johnson. We'll hand them out at the tailgate.
Wait a minute, now, who, you know, you know, whoever the next man in town, uh, they, they might not, you know, they might not like that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for the request.
Mr. Thompson, uh, you've given us your clerk report already, Oliver, so Oliver doesn't have to ask for it. And that means to join.
Chairman, before you all officially, officially go.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, ten o'clock, uh, we have the groundbreaking for Whole Foods.
Yeah!
Seventy Street and Huron. Uh, ten o'clock tomorrow morning, so hopefully that, that you all can be there. Following the groundbreaking, we have the, you should have invitations for our centenarians luncheon. Uh, we have forty-plus folks who identify themselves as being a hundred years old or older. Luncheon honoring them. Forty-plus, yes, sir.
Wow! Must be something to watch.
We expect several of them live in person.
We gotta get one.